The regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, January nineteenth. Uh Sheri, would you call a roll, please?
I was just on the phone with Bennett, sorry. So Chair Quilisi?
Yes, here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Trent? Commissioner Lottis?
Here.
Commissioner Trent?
You're muted, John.
Yeah, you're muted.
And Jamie Bennett has just joined us.
Just joined.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're still muted, John. Very good. Um, Pledge of Allegiance, I believe we're up to Commissioner Trent. Would you lead us, please? Pop up the flag. There we go. Can't hear you, John. Hello, John? Well, I'll lead then. All together, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next is public communications. I know Sheri was distributing a lot of emails to us all today and yesterday. Are there any people in the waiting room that wish to speak tonight on items not on the agenda?
No.
Okay, very good. We'll move on then to the consent item. The minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for December fifteenth. Any commissioners with refinements to the minutes? I wanted to compliment Sheri on, on keeping such good track of how many people spoke, particularly on the the design, the minor conditional use permit and director's exemption on the three fifteen North Montgomery. We'll be coming back to that, but that's another story. Uh, could we have a motion on the minutes then, please?
Do we accept them?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Nolan or Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we adopt the Ojai County Commission uh minutes from December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Jamie. Any discussion? Sheri, call a roll, please.
Sheri Quilisi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioners Lottis?
Abstain, I wasn't here for the meeting.
Trent?
Okay.
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, uh, I, on that question, I, I have a question for Epi. If someone is not present at the meeting, but later views the tape of the meeting, would they be allowed to vote to say, yes, those minutes are accurate?
I believe the answer is yes, although um I'll have to circle back and confirm that with you.
Okay, be good, be good to know. Not that, not that anybody who is unable to attend is gonna wanna go back and sit through a couple hours of this hilarity, but I think that opportunity is there. Okay, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Uh, Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes, I um visited the sites and I had, um, I did um go with the tour um on the one project, and other than that, I had no ex parte contacts.
Very good. Uh, Commissioner Lottis? Oh, you're still in Oregon.
Yeah, I um, so I am familiar with um these sites on the agenda tonight, um, but I have not been uh able to look at them recently. Um, although I did get on Google Maps to look again uh tonight uh or today, but um I have also had no ex parte con- contacts.
Very good. Commissioner Trent?
Uh, familiar with the sites, um, visited uh the Blanche Street location. Um, and no ex parte contacts.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
Uh, familiar with the si- with the sites and have had no contact with any individuals.
And I likewise am familiar with the sites, had a tour of the uh Blanche Street property uh along with Vice Chair Nolan on Monday. And my ex parte contacts consisted of speaking with the applicants there and explaining to them the procedures that we would go through tonight so that they would be understanding of who speaks when and in what order. And otherwise, no ex parte contacts. All right, on to item two, uh, design review permit on two sixteen East Matilaha. Lucas or Maura, pick it up, please.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna take this, Maura McAluso, Associate Planner. Thank you, um Chair Quilisi and Commissioners. So this project is located at two sixteen East Matilaha, and it's a proposal to convert two offices into one live work unit. The Planning Commission reviewed this project at a special Planning Commission meeting um of December eighth, twenty twenty-one, and they continued it to this date, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, in order to give the applicant an opportunity to explore parking alternatives. Um, the commission specifically um was concerned about the limited onsite overnight parking, and the commission requested that the applicant investigate uh the potential for shared parking or an access agreement with the adjacent neighbor to the west. The Planning Commission also requested that staff confirm uh the state accessible parking requirements. So regarding the agreement with the neighbor adjacent to the west, the applicant has indicated that the neighbor is not interested in any kind of an uh shared agreement um with the parking adjacent, on the adjacent site where they share a drive uh parking lot or having um a shared agreement for access to the rear of two sixteen. But also, the applicant does not wanna pave their rear at two sixteen for um for parking. And regarding the accessible parking, um staff confirmed that the state accessible requirements um do require that signage be uh visible, identifying the limiting, uh, the limited access for accessible parking as required. And also that if there are one to twenty-five spaces being proposed, that one is required to be uh an onsite van accessible space with loading um a tax or adjacent. So due to the parking concerns of the commission and the strong feelings against his own or their own strong feelings against paying a parking and move fee, the applicant has submitted a revised project description and plans that you have in your packet. And the revisions include a reduction in the proposed live work units from two to one, as I said in the introduction. Um, this would thus review, uh, reduce the parking demand or parking need. Additionally, in order to preserve the existing pepper tree, the parking has been relocated to be um perpendicular uh to the street and the building as opposed to where it originally was, parallel. And the van accessible parking space is adjacent to the structure um as required in the state code. Um, let's see. Um, the spaces are twenty feet in length as required. However, two and a half feet of that twenty feet is um located in that, in an overhang, a curb uh overhang over the curb. Um, and the two spaces are also eight feet in width as opposed to the required nine feet. But the eight feet is what would be prior, required for a compact space. So there are two parking spaces, two compact parking spaces and one handicap space which is then accessible. Um, the backup area is twenty five, twenty-four feet, which is what is required in the code. And having the spaces be eight feet wide instead of nine gives a little extra space for the backup area for the parking that's adjacent to the west. And also gives a nice walkway to pedestrian access to the site from the parking lot. So the applicant is not proposing any exterior alterations other than the ones that were previously reviewed at the December eighth meeting, except for a change in color due to um the com- the commissioners' concern regarding the dark exterior paint. So I want to remind you that the existing building is rather dark in color. Um, it's uh kind of a nat- natural wood. And the paint color was called black bean before, and now the paint color is also done Edwards, but it's celluloid. And although it is um lighter, I think when you, when I show it to you, because it's right behind me, you're gonna say that it's, it's still dark, however, it is lighter. And these are the two colors. This was the black bean that was originally proposed. And the one that you, next to it here is uh celluloid, and it's a little bit lighter. The proposed conversion is a reduction in the intensity of the site from its current use, as well as the initial proposal, obviously, for the two units. The proposed parking of one required van accessible space and the two other spaces for one live work unit seems adequate. Um, public parking includes the adjacent lot to the east as well as um across the street and then down the street to the west. For, and those are available during the day, um, and also the street parking. The, uh, did, let's see, I'm sorry. I um, I have my own mind and then I have my notes. Um, so the, the building um with the additions of glass-framed windows and glass doors will enhance the aesthetics of the building and also add light into the building. Um, when this building was built, it was built for an eye doctor, and so it was purposely um built to be very dim inside. So staff is recommending that the commission approve the project, subject to conditions of approval in the draft resolution that you have in your packet. Uh, we, I'm available for questions, obviously, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions? Just Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes, um, I do have a question. Um, and this is in regards to ADA parking. Uh, the one to twenty-five spaces which um would require ADA parking, or you know, initiate that you would have to have ADA parking, is that a state or a federal law, or is that something in our code?
That's a s- that's in the twenty nineteen state.
California Building Code, so it's a state.
California, yeah, sorry, I just.
But that's consistent throughout the state that if you have anywhere between one to twenty-five spaces or required spaces, you do definitely have to provide the um.
The one, a one that, and it's, and if you are having just one, it's a one van accessible.
It has to be the van.
With loading, yeah.
Okay, all right.
But like all other, like all other ordinances, this is for new projects, for projects that change.
Right.
Right, right.
There will be a lot of legal non-conforming stuff out there.
Exactly.
Okay, I just, yeah, thank you. That was my question.
Okay, I do have the code section here if you want it.
Yeah.
That's right. Uh, Commissioner Lottis?
Just a quick question. So, so um the two parking spaces plus the accessible space complies with the code other than the, the width, right? It's a, it's correct in terms of the number.
Well, I, I do wanna state that because it's in the VMU zone, the Planning Commission is actually charged with determining what they feel is appropriate for parking. And so we have that, and then we have, if we were looking at the code and standards, a residence would be required two spaces. Um, and the Planning Commission meeting last time, uh, or when we talked about this at the previous meeting, um, there was talk about the fact that there will be people living here and the concern about how many and how many cars. And um, but again, the Planning Commission is charged with determining what they feel is appropriate for this site and use.
Okay, and the um, are the skylights all pretty much located in the residential area of the building?
Well, the.
Or is, is the, how is, I'm sorry, how is the workspace separated from the residential, or is it just kind of integrated?
It's really pretty integrated. If you look at the floor plan, there's just a uh sleeping room or sleeping area, and then the rest of the unit, the whole unit is really um the live, a live workspace.
Okay, okay.
I notice also that uh on sheet A one point one, it looks like there is space between the two compact parking spaces and the edge of the property. And so, you know, if it turned out to be a problem somehow with people parking there, it looks like there's, there's room to actually widen each of those spaces uh at the expense of the backup space adjacent to the west.
Correct, you're talking about um to the west, the parking spaces uh be adjacent to the west there?
I'm saying, I'm saying the two com- uh what you referred to as two compact parking spaces uh actually could be slid a bit to the west and made wider and still stay on the property.
Yes, they could. And that's the little area that um they're hoping to use as pedestrian access.
Oh, okay, I thought the uh, I thought the entrance now to the property was over on the east side on that deck.
There is access on that side for the accessible parking. Um, there are two entrances. You can enter on either side of the property.
Okay.
So just a quick clarifying question. I'm looking at um A two point one, attachment E, page four of seven. Um, and it looks like the, the work, the, the live unit is separate from the work unit. Um, I just wanted to double check in the workspace, there's no, there's no area for sleeping, correct?
That's correct. In the works, I mean, it's, it's one space, um, but the the bedroom is off to, to the side. It was a little bit more integrated when they had two units, or when they were looking at two live work units.
Okay, all right. I just went, make sure I wasn't looking at that incorrectly.
No, you're not.
Okay, so it is one unit, two bedrooms. Okay, all right, thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Bennett?
Um, I was gonna say, it looks as if there may be a sliding door between the work area and the, and the live area there on uh A two point one. Uh, so it could be a separate unit altogether. Um, and, but it would have only a uh, oh, one large room and a bathroom attached. Um, I've got, I've got a question. Do, in live work, there are actually several questions. One, which is in, in a live work situation, um, can the is presuming that the um owner lives in one portion of it, can the other portion be leased out, or must they go together? That's really.
As far as, uh. I was kind of looking at Lucas also, but I don't know if he can tell. I'm looking at him on Zoom. Um, um, a live work, it would, the intention is for the, the people who live there to also work there. Whether or not there's a legal agreement to that, I'm gonna pass that question on.
So I would, my response to that, I think Maura is correct. The, the add-on to that would be through the conditions of approval, we could make that very clear, that this is one unit where the, the work portion and the live portion constitute one unit. So if in the future someone wants to come in and suddenly separate this into two, we run into the same situation that we were discussing back on December eighth, which was the two units and additional parking that we were trying to figure out how that was going to, to work. Um, and lose seemed to be mo- the most likely solution. They've backed off and identified really the one unit that we're seeing here. Um, if you want, if this commission, if it's the pleasure of the commission, we could certainly um strengthen this through um some sort of condition, identifying that the work and the live portion constitute one unit, the two are not to be separated. Or something to that effect. I'm open to interpretation.
Vice Chair Nolan, another question?
Yeah, I have a question, and it may, um, is the applicant gonna be presenting? Oh, are they gonna call?
I think, I think they're.
I'll, I'll ask him now, but if.
Yes, the applicant is here for questions um when it, when the time comes.
When it's appropriate, okay. I'm gonna ask the question now, and if, and please staff say hold that for the applicant if it doesn't seem appropriate at this point in time. But was the sole reason the applicant switched to one live work unit because of the parking um question?
It was of the parking concern, yes.
Okay, and they, well, maybe it's a better question for when they, I'll, I'll wait till they um.
Yeah, they, they can die, I, I, that question has even addition um even more information and clarification to your, your point and kind of your question. And I think the applicant can, can speak to that in terms of.
Okay, that's what I thought.
They were looking at as well.
Okay, Commissioner Bennett, another clarif- hot clarification for staff?
Yes, uh, the question is, uh, is the applicant seeking more of a curb cut here? Um, I would think that with three cars pulling straight in as opposed to the way that the uh parking spaces used to be organized, that you'd wanna have a curb cut behind all three of the, of the, of the um spaces. And then a corollary question of do we lose a parking space um on the street as a result of that?
So they are not asking for um an increase in their curb cut, and they are providing for the twenty, the required twenty-four feet backup area, um, which our code states is what's required for, for backup, so it, they should be able to be, to maneuver on that site. And if they were to have, to request that, and if it were approved, we would lose a parking space uh on street parking.
Thank you.
Is that, is that something that the Public Works Department would get involved in, is whether or not an, a wider curb cut is required?
It is um something that they would be involved in. It's also something that we discussed with them previously during the, all the different renditions that the applicant is going through. Um, yes.
And Public Works did not feel it necessary to widen the curb cut there?
Oh, for this um proposal, no. No, they do, they have their twenty-four feet um backup area, which is adequate for maneuvering onsite.
Yeah, looking at sheet A one point one, it looks like there might even be another parking space there off to the east side. But um, because you're, if you park in there, you're not blocking the loading area of the handicap space. Anyway, okay. If we're out of questions for staff, then let's hear from the applicants. Uh, Sheri, can you bring them in? Uh, Mr. O'Neal, there you go. You're.
Hi there.
Unmuted. Very good. Go ahead, sir.
Hi. Uh, so I'm sorry, can you recap the questions, and I'll go through them uh one by one?
Uh, go ahead.
Can we ask our questions over again, is that?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, uh, yeah, if you could, please.
Oh, sure. So I, the question that I had was, um, if, if the parking, or if, I'm just putting the scenario out, if the parking wasn't an issue, or if the Planning Commission said, uh, you know, we'll come up to, we'll come up with a solution. But yes, essentially, you could have the two live work units. Would you have stayed with that and pursued it?
Uh, yeah, I mean, that was our initial hope is um, we had applied to have the accessible space on the adjacent public lot be recognized there. That wasn't allowed because of state code.
Right.
Um, if we had been able to get one space per live work unit, we would have just kept the plan as, as two units.
Yeah.
But the sense that we were getting from both the, the planning hearing and, and subsequent conversations with um our planners was that we were probably going to be seeing some sort of an in-loof fee to pay for additional parking spaces off-site, and um, I, I just couldn't bring myself to do that. We pay uh property tax on that adjacent lot. And it just didn't seem fair to, on top of that, have to pay for in-loof fee, so. But you know, it's fine. I think the one live work unit, it's, it, it's great. We're fine with that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Bennett, you had a question for the applicants?
Yes, it's, it's your intention that the same family that will be living uh on that site will also be the family or the, the, an individual from that family will be the one who will be working in the workspace. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. Initially, our, our long-term plan is for my wife and I to occupy that building. We, we have our own architecture practice. We do artwork. Um, we would live in the back and have that front space as our studio. Um, and we would hope and, you know, in the, over the next couple of years before we live there, that we would find somebody who has a similar uh need um that doesn't have a high intensity usage.
Okay, Mr. O'Neal, are there any other things that you would like to bring forward to the commission at this point? Uh, we know you changed from two live work units to one and rearranged the parking. That's all in our packet. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, yeah, I just, I wanted to point out on the um, and Maura already addressed your question about the um, the, the compact width parking spaces. Um, we did make those eight feet so that we could have pedestrian access to that side of the building. I just wanted to make that clear, because if we don't have that access, then we don't, a lot of the existing openings, especially the, the entrance to the live portion of the project is along that west side. So if we had the spaces, if there were nine feet, they would occupy it all the way up to the property line and, and make it very difficult to, to get down that side of the property. Um, we, and I just wanted to point out that they're, they're compact in width, but they're standard in depth.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I should point out too is you'd mentioned that there might be parking on the east side, additional space. Um, it wouldn't be possible to do that because that would be where vehicles would need to back into, in order to exit the the site uh headfirst.
See?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't like backing out of my driveway into the street either, so. Okay?
Yeah, that was one, uh, sorry, that was one approach that we had initially taken. We, we tried to maintain the two live work units and do tandem parking. Um, but uh Public Works did not wanna see us expand that curb cut and back into the street. That was a concern of theirs. They wanted us to come out headfirst.
Yeah, plus the city loses a parking space.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, any other commissioners have questions for the applicants? Very good. Thank you, Mr. O'Neal. We'll, uh, if something comes up, will you still be with us so we can ask another question?
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll stay here.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, at this point then, we'll open the public hearing. Sheri, is there anyone who wants to speak on this item?
Uh, no hands are raised, so no.
Very good, and we'll, we'll close the public hearing and go into deliberations as the commission. Vice Chair Nolan, please.
Yeah, um, you know, this is so interesting that we continue to have these parking issues at every Planning Commission meeting. Whether it's residential, live work, commercial, there's always something going on with the parking. And, you know, when they first came to us with this project, we all, I believe, or I'll, I'll say that I said, and I ca- I think I'm speaking in general, but, oh, wow, wonderful, more housing and two live work units. This is what we're, we've been talking about. And then the whole thing gets shot down because of parking. And I'm dr- bringing this up, you know, not to belabor it for the applicant, but just in general, I I'm, I'm pleading to my fellow Planning Commissioners and maybe even there's one of our city council members and our staff. How can we move this forward when we have continually at Planning Commission said we need to look at this and figure it out? And I understand if there's something in the state or federal like with ADA, okay, I get it. But is there, you know, how can we move this forward to not continually have parking issues? And not look at some. And not look at something uh with kind of a whole systems approach? We desperately need the housing. You know, live work, we want more vibrant um you know, businesses, small businesses where people are not having to drive around because they can walk from their living unit right into their workspace. And then that gets shot down because of our parking rules, code, et cetera. I don't know, I just wanted to share that and that's why I asked the applicant, I thought you know, is there a way and and then I'm also right now posing a question to staff. I know as a commission, we have some leeway with parking when it comes to commercial. And would you be able at this point to actually share with us? What does that mean that we as a commission have some leeway? What are the parameters with that? Um and is it okay, Chair Colsey, if if the staff member answers that?
Oh, absolutely.
So that's my question. What does that mean that we have we have some say-so on on um resolving or figuring out parking problems?
Yeah, uh Vice Chair Nolan, are you talking about figuring out parking as a holistic approach? Or as it relates to this specific project?
Well.
Expansion of.
It's actually both, and I know that the other one is a bigger topic and I don't want to bog down our process tonight and I want to stay on the agenda.
Okay.
But I do believe um that they are related and so um.
Yeah, I'm seeing.
I guess keep it to this project.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about this back, I want to say, December eighth. Three options, the in-loo, um you know, waiving a portion of the parking.
Right.
And then providing the onsite parking. I think that's kind of three three of the options. Uh you know, in in terms of how the discussion went at Planning Commission on December eighth, staff was was kind of under the um assumption and and to a certain degree, given direction, it felt like to try to find a solution to the parking so that there's really kind of two parking spaces that are available for that work live work for each of those units onsite. The challenge, and I I think you've alluded to this as well, is when you look at modifications or in increased intensification of a use or modification of a use from kind of a commercial to a live work aspect, um building then gets involved with how that parking is addressed and it's required to be brought up to current standards. Um and that's, there was no, at this time, there is no ADA accessibility space, a van accessible space onsite. That's the one requirement. I think that was discussed in the very beginning of this meeting. I think one for every twenty-five spaces provided onsite requires a van accessible space. Um that's true, and we're using the two thousand and nineteen standards. I know at one point, I think um a resident uh at December eighth meeting had brought up, well, you're not necessarily required to um to sign it to that to that degree. And he was instead, that individual was quoting a code section from previous uh code cycles for the California Building Code. That doesn't apply here. We've got the most current standards um through the California Building Code. So three options is really the way in which they could address this in working with the applicant. They've chosen to scale it down in order to fit the parking onsite. They looked at other alternatives in terms of potentially providing parking on the on the backside of the slot. Uh it presents itself with quite a few challenges. They talked to, I think it was in the packet as well, they talked to the neighbors um in terms of finding out if there was an appetite for reciprocal parking. I think that's, maybe that's even a fourth option, actually, now that I'm thinking about it. And I think the challenge there is that applicant or that property owner to the west has some bigger ideas for that site, which um I can't really speak to that currently, but there's some things that are are going on at that site which just don't jive with where um this applicant is going. So that that to a certain degree is off the table. So we're we're back to how do we fit parking on that site? Realizing that there's a possibility for parking also spelling into the street.
Right.
On onsite versus on the street.
Right. And if I'm understanding correctly, we as a commission do have the option to say uh no, we're good with you not having four parking spaces for two residential units, and I'm just putting this out for an example. And let's just say there's just two. And we were okay with it, but we could actually make that decision. Is that correct? I'm not saying we're going to, but as a scenario.
Yep, we yeah, so we could decide that the parking as it's outlined in the revised proposal
Right.
would, in the commission's opinion, be adequate if there were in fact two live workspaces. That's within our power to decide.
Through the DRP process, which is what this process.
Still have to have the ADA space, but we could decide that two others would suffice. I think also when we discussed parking with the property to the west, there was some discussion of of coming to an agreement with the lavender inn as an access to the backside of this building.
Yep.
Yeah.
It was just mentioned.
And I take it that the city is not interested in providing a space or two out of the public parking as an access to the rear of the building. Is that right?
Yeah, it becomes difficult because we the city would then end up losing parking spaces and that the the lot to the to the east, sorry, my directions, um is publicly owned and it's used, it has multiple purposes.
And it would be for it would be for for a private purpose if you provided a driveway into the back of the property.
Correct. It presents challenges, challenges that the applicant wasn't interested in pursuing. I think is probably the best way to to describe that.
Okay, okay. Uh well, commissioners, it sounds like we do have some choices here to make. Um I personally kind of like the the parking arrangement in the revised proposal. Um but I don't personally have any heartburn over allowing two work live workspaces and two spaces besides the ADA space for parking. Um uh Commissioner Lottis.
Um, yeah, I mean, I love the idea of live work, but I I I think we have to be very careful on parking. Um because we don't want to turn into a you know, a high intensity urban area with cars all over the place. And um and the fact is that we're looking at um parking that that is just shy of what might be required because we've got two parking spaces for the resident, you know, presumably that'll be used primarily by the residential. Um and then the accessible parking, which so there's really not
Not a lot of customer space there.
People coming to the work. I I I mean, I in terms of flexibility, um you know, that I I think that's about as far as I can go. Um and I I think we have to also be very careful about um when people point to, well, there's a parking, there's a public parking lot just right next door or across the street, or there's public parking in front.
Yeah, I don't want to get into counting public parking for a private business.
Right, we need to keep it separate and and um and also the in-loo fee is actually our current tool for handling uh parking on a more uh systemic basis and um you know with the idea that if we got enough part in the parking fees, we could actually add a parking garage somewhere downtown or something like that. Um so um I I I guess I'm I'm not willing to look at at two units. I I am very appreciative of the applicant's efforts to uh to come up with something workable. Um I'm willing to look at reduced parking um to encourage the live work um and have it have that go forward. Um but uh I I I'm just, I feel it's pushing too much.
Let's stop there.
Second unit, yeah.
Okay. Um Commissioner Trent, your thoughts?
Um yeah, I like the revised solution. Um I think it's uh adequate for the proposal. Um so I I like the the new direction and that's that's what we're voting on, right? We're not we're not going back in time, right? We're we're voting on this one.
Right.
Okay, cool. Yeah, no, I I think it's great. I think it's great. I agree with uh Commissioner Nolan. I think overall, we need to have a holistic conversation around parking in general. Um I think specifically with the VMU area. Um and and Lucas, correct me if I'm wrong, but in VMU space, is that up to the planning commission to decide parking or is that just done? Because this was a a um a live work situation?
Uh VMU, I think it's I think it's the VMU. I think that's if I look at the um code specifically.
Right.
I think it is.
And looking at three five, I think it was Lucas.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I I I think that, you know, considering uh the conversation that we're gonna have later on with the um our consultants around with Rami and the idea of uh the village mixed use expansion. Um we really need to have that conversation around parking and and whether or not it's up to the planning commission to decide each one of these on a case by case basis because I have a feeling that we'll get overwhelmed with parking issues over and over again.
Okay, Commissioner Bennett, your thoughts?
You know, I guess I I share Commissioner Lotte's uh um concern. This is a project when we first saw it, I thought this is great. We're gonna add some density to downtown. We're gonna have live work. Uh all makes sense. Um but uh given the ADA requirement for a a van um uh you know, and the fact is, we do need in the in the case of a single um family house uh probably with two working professionals. And um you're gonna need two parking places for them. And if it is in fact a real um uh place where somebody's conducting business, you needs you need a place for that person, for the client to arrive and and park in, so. Um we're short already, so I I think we're sort of stuck with what we've got. I think they've got some I think they have a nice design solution in what they've got. Um and uh so I'm I'm in favor of the applicant's proposal at this point in time.
Okay, um on on the broader question, I have seen and read in some but not exquisite detail the nineteen ninety-one parking study. Is that something that you, Lucas, made available to all the commissioners or did it pop up into my mail separately or? I would encourage everyone to read that nineteen ninety-one study.
Uh I did not forward that nineteen ninety-one study to the full commission, but if the full commission would like to see a copy of that, um I think it's a good a good read. There's been an update that's been done um in two thousand and twelve, I want to say. Two thousand and eight, I know it's an even year. Um that I can also provide to the commission, but I don't want to I don't want to belabor the in-loo aspect because that that is a a piece that I reserve for a a separate discussion because I think it does need to be discussed. I know Commissioner Trent has brought that up. Um I've started doing kind of that deeper dive into it, and I think there's a lot to unpack with it. Um that I think the full commission should should be aware of, and there's pieces to that puzzle that I think the full commission should be aware of. I think those two reports are pieces to those puzzles.
I'm curious about the the uh several live work establishments at the northwest corner of Ventura and Matilaha. There are several businesses there, studios or used to be uh an apothecary there. Did all of those have the same two residential spaces plus some for clients requirement on them?
Um I I don't have that information in front of me in terms of when it was developed. I'd have to I'd have to look into that further.
Okay, okay.
And ADA parking as well.
Yeah, there was a there was a project that I think the applicant had mentioned at December, the December eighth meeting. And I think we put in the packet identifying that that project did in fact pay in-loo fees, I think to the to the tune of three in-loo in-loo parking spaces. To address.
Spaces.
Yeah, to address that.
I've only seen one on-street ADS ADA space. And uh what happens to be right next to this project. And I'm I'm mildly amused that none of the city parking lots have any ADA spaces in them. But I guess they're all grandfathers. Is that right?
Yeah, so if there's any changes that are made to those to those areas, it would have to be brought up to current standards. Um in terms of of cr- you know, in terms of changing the configuration or something to that degree. Then yes, they would have to brought up current standards, which would require the um the accessible space, the van accessible space.
Okay. Um my sense of it is that the there is a consensus in favor of the revised proposal. Um the conditions of approval call out how many spaces, the ones that are in the proposal? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, the project description would be the the three spaces, one of which is accessible.
Okay, and I'm trying to remember, I've read through it. I don't recall anything in the resolution and the conditions of approval about um any in-loo parking fees. Is that correct?
That's correct. There are no in no in-loo fees being required.
Okay. So what's the sense of the commission? Can we have a motion? Uh Commissioner Lottis?
I just have one question on the um it was a condition condition eighteen. Um why do we have a prohibition on brass or gold-plated address numbers?
I think that's a fire department regulation.
So you cannot have, does do we know why or is it just is? It just.
My impression was they're too shiny and they're hard to read when the fire truck comes down the street.
I I have never I've never seen that. I think lots of people probably have uh brass or gold gold lettered address numbers.
I've seen a lot of brass now, yeah.
Um, okay, uh.
That's not in the code. That's got to be in the fire department regulations.
Right, though I'm assuming that, but um maybe staff could double check that. May is that really current? Is that really honestly their requirement?
This condition is coming from the fire department.
It is, okay.
Yeah, so when we ship this off to them on a preliminary basis, they typically come back come back with um either their standard conditions or modified conditions. This one, I believe it was just the standard conditions which included that.
Yeah.
You know, on a on a separate note, we could reach out to them and ask for a little bit of clarification on that because I'm assuming it has something to do with glare, but I don't want to assume anything and it's from a safety standpoint, they're looking.
Yeah, I just uh uh I did read each condition. I just wondered. I thought that was.
Feels kind of odd, yes.
Odd, yeah.
Uh Vice Chair Nolan, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. I am in favor of adding the condition that um you know, this is one approval for one unit for live work and that there needs to be a separate tenancy, two separate tendencies are not allowed, not permitted. Something to that effect.
Okay.
But um.
Uh Vice Chair Nolan?
Yeah, this is a question for staff. I know with the commercial projects, um they're required to do bicycle parking. Is is uh VMU also required or not?
I think that was an exception for the VMU, but I'm not positive.
I think so too, but I just wanted to be sure.
I'd have to take a look at that.
Yeah.
Let me let me take.
If a condition is to to meet Public Works requirements as reflected in Title seven and Building Department as reflected in Title nine and the Planning Department as reflected in Title ten, if it's in there, they have to do it. If it isn't in there, they don't.
Right, and and Lucas is, I think, looking into it right now while we're while you're talking.
Sherry?
We have the applicant raising his hand again, so I'm not sure if you wanted to let him speak or not.
Um sure, this is this is not a long a long thing. Let's let Mr. O'Neal uh speak to us again. Yes, sir.
Hi there. Um I just wanted to uh comment uh on Kathy's point about offering flexibility to the VMU zoning for developments. Um that one one thing that the city could potentially look at is is allowing for, you know, tandem parking or or, you know, some flexibility in how you access the site. Um because if you if you were to compare this to a um a residential development, somebody could come in and they could do a um accessory dwelling unit.
Right, no parking.
And do tandem parking, you know. And do tandem parking, you know, garage is gone, it's, so it's. Uh, maybe that's what the city needs to look at, is just offering some flexibility. Maybe it's the public works department saying you don't have to. Leave the site headfirst, you can back out. You know, there's, there are many, I think, options that could be looked at in that regard.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Um, are we ready for a motion of some sort here?
Well, hold on, before we go further, I, I had promised the bicycle parking requirements, and that's in ten dash two point fourteen-ten. Um, there's an A, B, C, and D within that subsection. Subsection B states all commercial office and industrial use should provide suitably designed and adequately lockable. Facilities for bicycle parking which shall be located in a convenient and visible location as determined by the applicable review authority.
It says it's up to us again.
Precisely.
Okay, but there's not a hard requirement for it in the VMU?
Mm-mm. Not a hard requirement. This is, this is in relationship to all uses that I just described, commercial, office, industrial.
Okay.
However, the uh, VMU zone is listed along with the other commercial, I mean, in the zoning code.
Yep.
I brought it up, yeah.
So, how many bike racks would, would, I mean, how, how is that decided? How many racks? I mean, how many, how many bicycles would they accommodate?
That's a good question, and you know, there is, I don't believe there's anything in the code, because every time we have a commercial project, no matter how small or how big. It just says bicycle parking, but there's nothing, it doesn't say how many you need to accommodate. In this case, I would say um, you know. Two.
Two?
For. Bicycle parking.
That would kind of make up for the um, the lack of space for uh, business clients. They can just bicycle over.
I know, that's the beauty of the VMU.
I don't know if the applicant would be okay with that, but I, I, I think we need to in, uh, raise our, raise our, at least I do. Raise um, my awareness level uh, and thinking of, about the provision of bike racks. I kinda skip over that part many times.
Um, I should also note that it looks like the applicant does have.
Raising his hand again.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. O'Neill.
Hi there, I, I just wanted to, before we go down the, the path of uh, bike racks. I just, I wanted to point out that there, well, first I wanted to know where, if we do have to do this, where would that bike rack have to be located? That would be one question. Um, and then I just wanna point out that there are many locations on this site where one could just put a bicycle. Um. It's not a, I, I don't want it to be viewed as a, as a heavy, like an intense commercial usage where a bike rack does make sense. Um. I just, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, there's, there's plenty of space. I think we could all see that on the plot plan to, to park a bike. The, the purpose of the bicycle parking is to park and lock a bike.
Yeah.
There's a, you know, one of those funny shaped backward P and forward P posts, that kind of thing. Whatever, that would allow someone to park and lock a bike, that's all.
Yeah.
Right, and I think um, just on the. Um, I guess that would be the west side of the wood fence and gate. That you're proposing by the DG area on the east side. You might be have enough room, you still have enough room for people to do their, their three-point turn to get out, you know, back up and head out. And have enough for two bicycles.
On the west side?
West of the gate. So, which is like right along the sidewalk, there's a um. It's proposed wood fence gate. It says under separate permit on the east, that would be the southeast corner.
Right.
And then if you look, and right below that, which would be the west of the gate. You could do two, probably two bikes in there and still have enough room for cars to easily and not be impeded with the backing up. And heading out process.
That would be uh, where there's um, DG that.
Yes.
Right.
So, yeah.
Would, would you, would you uh, feel fulfilled if we had a requirement? That there be space provided to park and lock two bicycles at a location to be determined by the applicant?
I would be okay with that. You could say it's two, two bicycle minimum. They won't do more, that's fine as well. I think.
Okay, so we have, so far, we have two potential additions to the resolution. One specifying that the live and work units are a single unit. And two, that we provide a minimum of space for parking and locking two bicycles on-site. Is there anything else? And, and do we need, uh, we could include all that in a single motion? If there's a consensus in favor of both those, otherwise, we could vote on them separately. Is that correct, attorney?
That is correct.
Okay. What's the sense of the commission here?
I'm good with both.
Do it all as a single motion?
Same here.
Jamie, John?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, then could we have a motion to approve this DRP, et cetera? With the two amendments, one to specify that it be a single live-work unit. And second, that there be parking installed by the applicant for a minimum of, of two bicycles to be parked and locked. At a location to be determined by the applicant.
Applicant, yeah, working with staff, applicant and staff.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
All right.
Second.
So, Vice Chair Nolan?
Sure, I'll make a motion that uh, we adopt DRP twenty-one dash zero-one-two with the two amendments as stated uh, by Chair Quillisi. And um, I think that's all I need to say.
I think that's it.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Lottis. Any discussion? All right, Sherry, would you call the roll on item two, please, as amended?
And Quillisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Terrific. Mr. O'Neill, you have your approval. Get with Maura and Lucas and sort out any of the details. All right, let's move on to item three. A zone change and general plan amendment regarding property at three oh-nine Blanch Street. This is yours also, Maura?
Yes, it is. Thank you, um, Chair Quillisi and the rest of the planning commissioners. So as you just said, this project is located at three oh-nine North Blanch, and its request for is zone change. Um, zone designation change from public, quasi-public, that's PL, to multifamily residential high-density, that's R-three. And also a change in the general plan land use designation from variable, which is P, to ha- medium-density. Medium-high-density residential, which is MHR. Um, for a property that's currently developed or was developed with a religious facility. Proposed to be converted to a single-family residence. The site is approximately a half an acre and is developed with an approximately three thousand square foot, single-story building. Originally designed to resemble a traditional single-family residence with stucco walls and shingle roofing. There are other site improvements of, very limited, um, which include an asphalt parking lot and various hardscape and landscape improvements. The project consists of a proposed change of use of the existing building and site. From the church facility to residential. The property owners intend to keep the exterior of the building unchanged and no changes to the site. Including the existing parking lot or pros- uh, are proposed at this time. Except for the surrounding areas zoned. Um, PL. Uh, which is the public, quasi-public. Um, and that includes a site that's opposite of this, on the opposite side of this block. And then also a large portion of a block to the south. Other than that, the surrounding zoning is uh, village mixed-use, that's VMU. And the area is developed with a mixture of residential and commercial uses. The request for a zone change to R-three, and again, that's the multifamily residential high-density. Is to allow a single-family residence while also maintaining compatibility. And complementing the residentially and commercial, commercially high-intensity surrounding village mixed. Village mixed-use uses. The R-three zone would allow for future additional residential development. Um, increasing the intensity to multifamily. If that were um, desired at some time in the future. Based on these surrounding land uses, a single-family residence. Which is what is proposed now and the potential future development of additional residential units. That would be compatible with the neighborhood as the neighborhood is now. The surrounding uses um, are a mixture of single-story residential uses, both. Single-family and multifamily with a scattering of commercial uses. Including a two-story community center on the opposite side of the block on the northeast corner of Aliso and Canyatta. And there's also an ARC enrichment center located on the adjacent block at two-ten Canyatta Street. The R-three zoning district is intended for areas appropriate for high-density multifamily housing. The maximum allowable density is fifteen units per acre. The R-three zone district is consistent with the high-density residential land use designation proposed for the um. The change in, for the general, the general plan, land use designation. The Ojai Municipal Code requires that two covered parking spaces be available for a single-family residence. So the recommendation for approval of this project in the resolution includes a condition of approval. Requiring that the applicant submit an application for um, a director's exemption for construction of. Um, of the two, of the cover for two, two cars prior to approval of building permits. For interior resurrect, re- renovations that are most definitely going to be done for, to change the church into a residence. And staff has discussed this with the applicant prior to meeting tonight. The project meets all other development regulations um, of the zoning ordinance, including setbacks, building height, and lot coverage. The request to change the general plan land use element to MHR. Is because the primary purpose of areas designated as MHR is to provide an area of transition. From single-family density to those found in the VMU designation. Which includes single-family residential up to eight attached dwelling units on a parcel. Um, as included in your staff report, the request is consistent with several policies of the general plan, and those are listed in, in your packet. The planning commission is also charged besides um. With the zone change and general plan amendment, is also charged with considering the California Environmental Quality Act determination for this project. And CECL guidelines, that's California Environmental Quality Act. Um, section fifteen-three-oh-one, class one is for existing facilities. And that is the designation that um, has been deemed appropriate for this project. The key consideration for this class one. Um, is whether or not the project involves negligible or no expansion of the existing use. And as described above, that's um, what this project has been deemed. A future expansion on the property would require um, its own environmental assessment. So with that, staff is recommending um, approval of the project, subject to the conditions of approval that are in your packet. And besides myself, uh, we do have the applicant here if you have questions.
Terrific, thank you. Um, Commissioner Trent?
Yeah, a quick question for staff. Um, just curious why uh, VMU is not considered, or if it was, uh, why did you decide to go with R-three?
The um, the current property owner is looking to keep this as a single-family residence. Um, however, being at R-three, there is potential for higher density, which would be compatible with the VMU. Um, the intensity of the VMU, they are not looking to have a commercial use on this property.
Yeah, and just to, just to follow up on that, um. In our conversations early on, they've identified that throughout this process, they're interested in um, single-family. With potential in the future of additional units, whether that be through ADUs, junior ADUs, or even additional units, but. Right now, they're looking at it as a single-family use. Um, I, early on, had discussed with them the option of a VMU. Uh, as kind of just encapsulating what already surrounds them. Um, they opted out of that simply because of the commercial aspect. They're not interested in, in commercial um, now or into the future, so.
There is the one downside, that if you're dealing with a single-family residential property. There are a lot of things that you can do without asking permission from the planning commission. And if your VMU's owned, everything that you do requires asking permission of the planning commission. Uh, so that's one, one thing at least. Uh, Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, I've got a question. I, I don't see it being used. Um, I've seen actually only one mention recently. About R-two, and why R-three and not R-two? What is R-two? In terms of uh, allowance, cause uh, fifteen units per acre. Or in this case, seven and a half units on that lot. Um, would be, be accepted, the average house in that area. I would guess it's somewhere between eight hundred square feet and fifteen hundred square feet. Um, and it's, they're not, this is uh, you know, not a high, it all, I don't know why we need to go to high-density. Which is what, which is what both land use and the zoning. Uh, is pushing us towards in this, in these resolutions. Is there something between R-one and R, R-three?
Well, the difference is, you mentioned R-two, and so that would be five thousand square feet. Per unit as opposed to three thousand for the R-three. And I believe that the R-three was considered, or is being considered uh, because of its compatibility. And consistency with the intensity of the surrounding zone.
If I were to live there, in, in, in one of those blocks, I'd be mostly concerned about a very high-density. Use going in there. I wouldn't be worried about somebody putting in a five thousand square foot house there. In fact, three thousand, which this is, is about twice, the, under, they're gonna build under the roof that's there already. So they're gonna put in a three hundred thousand square foot house, which is very large, which is like two times anything in that neighborhood. Um, so I guess I'm just wondering, besides having a cap at five thousand square feet with R-two. Is there a, a smaller number of units which are allowed in R-two?
The uh.
The number of units.
The property directly across Blanch to the east. Is a mixture of one and two-story apartments. Um, and it seems to be pretty dense. There's seven or eight units in there in roughly the same size property. Is that right? That, across the street on Blanch.
To the east.
Like it was about the same size property.
Correct, to the east. It's a, it's a double lot.
Yeah, like this, okay.
Like this.
And you're saying, and you're saying there are eight dwellings on that, on that property?
Yeah, there, there're one, one-story apartments or condos or something that face on Blanch.
Right.
And then facing on Oak to the north. Uh, there're two-story apartments there. All part of that same development across the street from this property.
There's, yeah, and there's probably, there's seven or eight units on that site. I'm just looking at, at the site right now.
And with this square footage of this particular property, the maximum number of units would, would be seven. And they would be coming before the planning commission um, for development, uh, a um, design review permit. Request um, for consideration.
Can I find out how many, how many square feet, I'm sorry, how many units were in R two allowed? To be built on that property?
It's three to four units per acre and this is a half acre, so.
Right. Sorry, I'm just gonna do the math for you.
Two, so basically it looks to me like it would be two units.
Two units, plus A D U.
And and V M U allows single family homes. I mean.
Yes.
You know, so.
Could be two units and two A D U's. Four already.
Yes.
Actually, it would be four units would be um permitted, well, subject to to consideration. Um it would be four point three five units in an R two zone as opposed to seven point two six in the R three zone.
And if you had, if you had seven units, you couldn't get seven A D U's in the same space. You just, you can't get all of that in the half acre.
So more, more, you're saying even in the R two. I thought the density, maximum density was three to four units per acre.
Well, you know what, what I'm looking at is um there we. In the R two zone district, it's five thousand square. Per unit.
Per unit.
And so if you divide um.
Right.
Twenty one, seven eighty by five thousand, you get four point three five.
Is that inconsistent with the general plan though? Cause I, I, I saw somewhere it was three to four units per acre. Is that the general plan limit?
No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at um, I'm looking in the zone, in the municipal code.
Something's not uh uh, something's not uh. Syncing up there.
Well, it's a half acre, it's not a full.
The half acre, yeah. But if the density limit is three to four dwelling units per acre. And you've got a half acre, to me, you're talking about.
You may, you may have found a place where the code is not consistent with the general plan.
Something's not sounding correct, yeah.
Well, I just, I guess I know that across um. Uh what is the street that's to the north of? It's Oak. To the north of it, there is a two story, single family house on one side of the street. And a two unit um building with two dwellings uh in it. Um and so I was thinking about those, those, that level of density. And thinking, you know, then we cross this, we cross Oak and all of a sudden we're looking at. Going to seven, seven dwellings on a half acre lot, which seems like a lot, so that was.
Well, I mean, the, 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 everything, everything around it is V M U, so I, I, I don't think we should forget that.
Just a question on that, the V M U, do you have to have a business in order to have a? A residency in a V M U? You don't have to, right? I mean.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at the house right across the street, two oh four Oak Street. And um it looks like the lot's about the same size and it's a nice single family residence. It's in the V M U.
Single family is a permitted use.
The V M U runs all the way to the, to the south edge of Eucalyptus.
And and if I'm not mistaken, I think we're gonna hear in just a minute with Remy and Associates how the. V M U wants, they wanna standardize it in that area. I think there's a lot of pockets where we have a lot of disparity. And this would be just odd to have an R three lot in the middle of the V M U. And I, 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 I don't disagree that the current residents don't wanna, don't wanna have a, a business there, which is fine, but. One day they might sell and then we'll have this R three lot kind of just standing out like a sore thumb.
But then what's, what could be done in terms of multiple residences in the V M U?
I think they can go up to eight.
Right, eight units per acre, so.
Which is the same as R three?
Half an acre.
I think R three is fifteen.
Okay, okay.
It would be consistent with R two.
Right, right. I have a question um with the, of staff.
Go ahead.
So, so. A big portion of that, I mean, the house, the, the, the building structure is large. Um but a large, the rest, it's almost like the whole rest of the property is asphalt, so um. Do we have, uh, we don't have any code requirements that address um. The uh percentage of lot that's paved over, is that right? Since that's just gonna stand as.
Lot, lot coverage is defined by.
By the structure.
The structures, precise.
So we don't have anything that talks about too much pavement, right?
No.
Okay, um and so they're leaving the striped parking spaces and the arrows for the in and out and all, all of that?
I think probably the paint on the ground is probably up to the parcel owner.
Yeah, but it's a lot, it is, it's two thousand square feet of, of asphalt for a single family in this, which is awful lot and I was guessing. Catherine, that it, what it was is they didn't wanna trigger Sequa. And if they were to rip up the, the, if they were to change the landscaping there. They may require Sequa, uh whereas they don't require it if they don't change anything.
Um I spoke with the applicant regarding the asphalt and they were. Well, they, they can actually speak for themselves, um but. They were looking to remove it bit by bit when they were gonna do something in specific areas like where the parking. Structure is going to be, could remain, you know, could utilize that existing paving. And um I do not believe that removing the parking lot and doing landscaping, for instance, would require. Um a more intense Sequa determination.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I'd, I'd like to go back to the point regarding consistency with the R two as it relates to the general plan. Um looking at, at how R two matches up with um the general plan land use. So R two is a multifamily residential medium density. Matches up with medium high density residential. And within the land use element, it, it identifies. Medium high density residential, the primary purpose of areas designated as medium high residential. Is to provide for an area of transition from single family density. Um to those found in the village mixed use designation. The designation includes single family residential. On individual lots up to eight attached dwelling units on a single parcel. So if you're looking at R three versus R two, um you're looking at a density that is literally cut in half. Um minus maybe a unit.
You know, R two is half where R three is.
Correct.
Okay. Uh if we're through for the moment with questions for staff, then let's hear from the applicants. Sherry, can you bring him in? Uh Mr. Weber? You're muted, sir.
Yes, good evening. Chair Quillity?
Yes, please go ahead.
Commissioner members, thank you. Uh well, we appreciate the opportunity to um explain anything this evening. My wife Claudia and I are here. One thing I just wanted to clarify, there was some mention that. There were seven or eight units across uh Blanche to the east. If I'm not mistaken, there are nine units there. I met, I think he's the manager, gentleman by the name of Brian. Told me there were nine units there.
Could be six in that two story, you're not four, yeah.
And we're, you know, a half an acre is twenty one thousand seven hundred eighty feet, so we're a little over a half an acre. But the bottom line is, my wife and I have um. Owned property here in Ojai for ten years. We've lived here. Uh permanently or full time about the last four, but. Um we raised our children up in the very rural part of the North Cascades in Washington State. Once they were out of the house, we were kinda tired of winter. They have about four months of deep snow. So we actually, for a while, we're, we're taking care of, of Claudia's mother here. Thought maybe she'd wanna move into the Gables. That didn't work out. But we can see the uh light at the end of the tunnel for ourselves. Uh such that our current home is a two story home. We'd like to just have a, a single story home. Would like to be right in town, so we can walk to town. So this seemed to be an ideal fit to um. To live in, and that's our, our plan. We have no plans to develop it, but. It, it, given the size of the lot, in fact, we've got nine units right across the street. I would also, um, I met Craig, who, who is a retired attorney, hadn't been inside of his house. He's uh to the north across uh Oak. And that's a fairly large house. I believe he said it was about twenty five hundred square feet. And then, of course, we've got smaller homes that uh join our lot. That front on Aliso. So it's, it's a, it's a little bit larger than some of the homes in the area. But uh essentially, uh that's our, our plan. As far as the landscaping. We've done a number of, a couple of remodels of, of homes. Where we started landscaping about the same time we did the interior and we realized that. It really would have been better to, to live in the place a little bit and get a sense of. You know, how outdoor spaces are gonna work. You know, until you live in a place, you really don't get a sense of the light, you know, in the afternoon, morning light. Um these sorts of things. So our thought is we're gonna uh remodel the inside. Live there a bit and then get a sense of, okay, you know, does it make sense to have a, a porch here or? Um you know, one thing I mentioned tomorrow, there's room, we, we kinda like to play pickleball. Be nice to have a little pickleball court there, but where we would put it, we don't know. There's plenty of room for a pool. Don't feel real strongly about a pool just for, for water conservation issues. But that's something that we would do down the line. And hopefully be able to use some of the existing asphalt, for example, certainly. For the covered uh car uh space, be it a garage or, or a carport. And um as I mentioned, perhaps a, a, a pickleball court, something like that. So that's, that's really where we are. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer them.
Any questions for the applicants? Uh Commissioner Trent?
Oh yeah, just uh, did, did you guys uh propose the, the R three zoning or was that a suggestion?
Well, we proposed it in, in the sense that, you know, again, right across the street, you, you've got nine units on, on the same size piece of land. Uh suffice to say, we're not gonna develop this property in our lifetimes, but we felt that. Perhaps one of our daughters, we have four daughters, uh you know, down the line, maybe it would make sense. Of course. That's gonna entail um. Approval by the planning commission and, you know, would be a, a challenge. Uh s- if it were seven units, I think that would be a, a big challenge for someone. It's certainly not. Something we're interested in doing. But it just felt like that made the most sense considering uh the size of the, the lot. It's twenty two thousand five hundred square feet. Basically a hundred fifty by a hundred fifty. It's the same size piece of land. That is occupied by, I think it's called Ojai Flourish. Which is catty kitty corner uh to our lot. It, it occupies the corner of Aliso and Canyada. And uh I guess it's, it's a sort of a commercial uh. Venture of some sort, but I think since COVID, you know, it's, it's been closed.
Yeah, I was just looking at those properties you were mentioning with. I think it was Craig you mentioned, he was across the street and then the, the other properties, the nine, the nine. Those are all within the V M U. Um just curious why you didn't decide to do V M U?
It's the commercial aspect.
Well, we have no interest in, in, in running a commercial venture there, which of course would be permitted by V M U. And uh given that there, there could be a need for more housing, it sounds like it's, it's within uh. You know, the, the, the scope of what. Ojai would like to see, if there are gonna be additional housing, it should be downtown versus, you know. A, a sprawl type situation. So, you know, it seems to make sense uh in that we have. Some pretty high density right across the street, uh right across Blanche.
Yeah, um there's no requirement to, to have a business in the V M U.
True enough.
But what do you do with that space otherwise? I mean, is it just empty?
You're, well, you know, your neighbor to, to, that you were mentioning that has the nine locations there in the V M U. Um your, your neighbor Craig at two oh four, two oh four, that, that's a residential house, big lot. Um he's in the V M U, so.
I think the, the V M U was imposed on a certain section of the city. What, about fifteen, eighteen years ago, Lucas, something like that? Uh most of what's in the V M U existed before the zone existed. And everything, almost everything north of Aliso that's in the V M U is. Is and was at the time residential.
I, I wasn't aware of that, Chair Quillity. I, you know, our understanding is that. R three minimum lot size is nine thousand six hundred square feet, so obviously we're. Uh double that, over double that. Um you know, I think it would lend itself to that, were, were someone wanting to do it down the line. You know, literally it's one block from Aliso and the trolley, two blocks from uh. Uh you know, West Ridge Market. So you, you, you know, you could have, one could have some units there which. In which people would, you know, not even need cars and that's kind of our goal, uh to not have to, to get in the car. To go to the store or to do anything else. And uh to live in a single story home, so I'm not going up the stairs and uh feeling my hips. Uh as I go up and down. So that's, that's really our, our goal here and it just. We weren't really, we never really considered V M U to answer your uh question, Commissioner Trent. The, the, the sense of that was, well, that, you know, would apply to someone who wanted to run a business, you know, an office or what have you and um. That's not, not interesting to us. We just would like to be able to live there, you know, we don't really wanna have. Um a commercial situation where you'd have people coming, you know, in and out during business hours and such. Um that's just, again, there, there, there's plenty of that around apparently. I wasn't aware of the history. As to whether that was imposed on some prior uses or not, but that wasn't something that interested us. And so that's really why we felt that it fit best in the R three uh category.
Okay, any other questions for the applicants? Um there was one thing uh on our, the, the tour that, that Vice Chair Nolan and I had on Monday. Prior to that, I was talking with the applicants. And I noticed that they have a large number of, of theater seats. Of course, this was a chapel, part of this building was a chapel. Um and I don't know what uh. We had talked about how to get rid of them, cause they wanna make a big room out of it. And I didn't know if the applicants had any more thoughts about that or not.
Well, we'd love to donate them. We tried to donate them to the playhouse or the theater, but. They wanted all the same kind, I guess it would seat a hundred fifty people. Uh but your suggestion, maybe the, the playhouse could use them or any, you know, any of uh. You, you council members uh have suggestions, we would like to see them put to use. They're nice. Chairs, uh they seem to be pretty new. I mean, obviously they're a lot newer than the building. You know, they're, they are not churchlike at all. They're really as, as uh. Chair Quillity mentions, they're, they're pretty comfortable uh theater chairs, with nice cushion, comfortable chairs.
There's eight or ten units of five seats, I think.
That sounds about right, yeah.
Hundred.
One hundred total uh seats, exactly.
One hundred total, okay.
Yes. Yes.
Anyway, so that's, that's a problem for the uh, the applicants to take care of after this. But uh, could be an opportunity for the city too. The council chambers could certainly use better seating than they have and with the new um. Help of Ojai building being emptied, there's a big room over there that might take seats. Who knows?
We're open, we're open to suggestions, so all, all of those sound great.
Sounded like, sounded like a free to a good home kind of deal.
Absolutely.
Um, anyway, do any commissioners have additional questions for the applicants? Or for staff regarding this? All right, then uh, let's open the public hearing. Sherry, do we have anyone who has? A, a desire to communicate with us on this?
We have no raised hands.
Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing and deliberate as a commission. Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Nolan, your thoughts in general?
Um, well, it's interesting, I, you know, I understand the village mixed use, um. You mean that the property is surrounded by village mixed use and they're off, obviously gonna have, need a zone change. But then if you look at the zoning map, in isolated locations, not a lot, there are um, R three areas. That are not necessarily contiguous, i- in other words, not in a large block. So, I could, I could almost go either way with that and I understand. Their uh, thought process behind the R three as opposed to the VMU. On the other hand, I suppose if they sold it, somebody who wanted to change it could always come back to planning commission and try to rechange the zoning to VMU. And then I also think about, you know, we talk about that we need housing. Invariably, the housing gets kinda axed for some reason. This is a potential opportunity, even though the applicant said they're not necessarily looking at that. So.
Somebody might.
But somebody might, yeah. So I, I really could go with the R three and not, uh, and feel okay about it.
I would agree. Um, Commissioner Lottis?
Yeah, my feeling about that is um. It's premature for the R three. I, I mean, if I'm gonna go to that kind of a high density zoning and general plan amendment. I wanna see the development that's proposed along with it. I wanna see it as a whole package. Um, and that can occur at any time. I mean, a, a zone change to R three could occur at any time. Um, I just feel that at this current time. Um, and considering how close it is to the downtown, considering how um, it's all VMU around. That that is the most appropriate uh, rezoning and it would accommodate what the applicants wish to have. A single family house and um, if there's, there's uh, future development opportunity on that, that site. Um, and somebody wants to propose high density development, um, fine, but. I, I would prefer to consider, I would feel that a rezone to the highest, to the high density would be um. More appropriate with a, with a complete package.
Okay, I, I, just for, for clarity again, uh, Maura, did you say that? My sense of what you told us about, about the opportunities for development. Were that unless these applicants choose to build an ADU by right. A single ADU by right on that property, they would have to come back to planning commission for any sort of. Multi-family development, is that correct?
That's correct. Which is fine. We should, we should be the reviewing authority for that kind of thing.
Yes, I think that would, so that would be required. Uh, Commissioner Trent, your thoughts?
Lucas has a hand up as well.
Oh, sorry, Lucas, please go ahead.
Lucas can go first, it's fine.
Okay, I just want to um, update the commission and make them aware. It's, it's not just the ADU, it'd be a junior ADU as well. Those are both considered ministerial actions. Not requiring this body to review, it's just meeting the standards moving forward. In addition to that, the recent um, state law and government code changes for SB nine. Would also be in play here and that is a ministerial action, which would allow for this lot to be subdivided to allow for an additional. Um, unit, so, or up to four units if subdivided. So I think it's important to note that as well, that's a ministerial action. So you potentially get four without really any sort of um, discretionary review, but ministerial review.
I'd just like to jump in here for a second and note that um, in consultation with staff, um, city attorney's office has uh. Come to the conclusion that um, SB nine only applies, well, SB nine only applies in single family zones. So it would not apply um, to a mixed use zone like the, the VMU. So just wanted to clarify that, um, but I think Lucas had the, the points exactly right.
Is R three a simi- a single family zone?
Medium high density.
It's, it sounds like it's multi-family.
Yeah, it is multi-family, however.
So does SB nine apply to this parcel if zoned R three?
I believe we put, I think Lucas will have to look in the memo, um, or we'll have to look in the memo that we, I think we concluded that. It's not a single family zone. Um, however, there's another piece of legislation which also affects multi-family zones. Um, that's AB six oh three and, and we have a memo coming on that, um, it's going out to the city. But essentially that allows for small home lot developments on multi-family lots. Um, that are under, so a lot that's under five acres, um, would allow someone to develop. Um, by, or apply, um, and a pretty close to ministerial action, um, small homes under uh, eighteen thousand square feet.
So it sounds like multi-family development on this property is already likely a ministerial action anyway.
Well, except that, except as I understand, unless it's VMU, right, Lucas? Is that what you just said?
If it's VMU, then they can't do anything without going to the planning commission.
Yeah.
If it was an ADU, they would, right.
Correct.
Yeah. Go ahead, uh, Commissioner.
I have a question regarding SB nine, and that is in regards to um, fire zoning. And is the city of Ojai now considered high fire? I- i- in some areas it may be high, very high fire, no? We're still on this, the old fire maps, okay. I've just heard different stories and I wanted to get it straight. And I knew that SB nine wouldn't apply if it was high fire, so, okay.
The city attorney's office hasn't seen um, any new maps that would change anything of that sort.
The city's opinion of the fire hazard severity. And the insurance company's opinion are wildly at odds at the moment.
I know that, yeah. And that's part of the reason I asked, just to find out where we were at, so, okay.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Bennett, uh, your thoughts? You're muted, sir. Here.
Um, I still sort of like uh, um, if we're gonna change it to, change it to an R two. As opposed to a village mixed use, if you wanna kick it down the road, we could make it village mixed use. But with R two, as I understand it, you could have four dwellings and four um, four ADUs on the property. Um, and uh, uh, as opposed to um, seven dwellings. So you actually get one extra dwelling by going R two. Um, but anyway, that's uh. As, according to my understanding, the um, the R two is, is to me a more attractive use in there.
Well, I'd have to ask Lucas, if the R three allows seven dwellings on a half acre. Does that mean fourteen with ADUs? Given setback requirements and fire spacing and such.
No, it means, it means seven.
Means seven.
Seven is seven.
But four, but does four mean eight?
Does four mean four plus four ADUs?
The density is still the same. I mean, it's, it's, it's a density um, question. So, what do we, what do we say for R two? It was one dwelling unit for every five thousand square feet?
Right, that would be four plus here.
Yep.
And R three would be one dwelling unit for every three thousand, which is seven plus. So that's the question. If four really means eight with ADUs, does seven mean fourteen with ADUs?
No.
How does the math not work?
No, because you're looking at it from a density standpoint. So, we're looking at a half acre site, not a full acre. So you're cutting everything that we're talking about here now.
So, yes, so at five thousand square feet of ground per dwelling unit, you've got four plus. And you're saying you could add four ADUs to that. Ministerially?
No, because four ADUs, the code only allows for one ADU per site. So it's one ADU.
So you'd have to subdivide.
Sure, unless you, unless you subdivide, but obviously if you're subdividing, unless it's through SB nine. A subdivision would be something that would come before this um, body.
That would be our choice as well.
And when you subdivide, you've gotta look at it from a sta- the standpoint of meeting minimum lot size, minimum width, minimum depth. So all those, all those features come into play here as well.
And then when you develop, you've gotta look at setbacks and fire separation.
Yes, all development standards are on the table.
Okay.
Even with SB nine?
SB nine's different. They've got their own set of rules and standards. Reduced setbacks is probably the most um, flagrant one that I'm seeing.
One of my favorite provisions that seems to find its way into more and more new laws at the state level is. Notwithstanding all other provisions of law, the following holds. Even if it's, even if it's inconsistent with everything else and uh. Must be very frustrating for the city attorney to try to sort that sort of thing out. Well, it sounds to me like there's a consensus here that this is a good project. And the remaining issue is, would the, would the planning commission rather see? A zone change to R two or R three? Does that make a difference, Maura or Lucas, in the general plan? Land use configuration?
I'll answer that. So if we go from R three to R two, and that's the recommendation going forward. By the planning commission, let's just use as, as a hypothetical. Um, the one-to-one there is R three as a multi-family residential high density matches up with. High density residential as a land use. For R two, multi-family residential as a medium density matches up with medium high density residential. So if you're going to R two as a recommendation, you also need to identify medium high density residential. As a part of the land use. So, the zoning map would be R two as a recommendation moving forward. And medium high density would be the recommendation moving forward, so that they match up.
Okay, so they are different land uses.
Yes.
The general plan.
Long, the long version there.
And is the VM, is the VMU uh, medium high density or, or is it high density?
The VMU is VMU. It only matches up with VMU. It doesn't have.
Other whole category.
Doesn't have a density. Got it.
All right, so I, it, it sounds to me like, and I'd ask the city attorney for clarification. Should we take a vote on R two versus R three and the corresponding land use? And then look at the rest of the package in combination with whatever goes there?
I would like to consider the VMU as well. I don't think that should be on the table.
VMU, okay.
Attorney's muted.
Sorry, the question was whether it should be considered, what, the R three first before, or, or the, for the VMU?
Well, yeah, should, should we vote separately? On R two versus R three versus VMU? And then on the, then on that decision in combination with the rest, rest of the package?
Right, I think it, I think it makes sense to vote on them separately, just for clarity sake.
Well, the, the application is actually for requesting the um, R three.
Right.
So shouldn't, should we take a, a straw poll to find out if we have, if the applicant, the support for that?
Is, if there is support for.
The R three.
For the R three as, as the package stands, that would be a useful thing. Um, and I, it's okay with me. To go with the R three. I could go with R two as well. Um, but um, let's ask, Vice Chair Nolan?
Well, so it's interesting, um, Commissioner Lottis brought something up earlier, um, and that was. You know, if we went with the R three, because the applicant is actually saying, gee, we're just gonna have a single family residence and. Maybe we'll sell it and somebody else can do it. But ideally, if somebody was coming for this zoning change of R three, they should come together with a package of. Here's what we're planning, our multi-family residential package here, which I tend to agree with. But then, it begs the question, would we do that with the R two as well?
The R two is less density.
It's less density, but at the same time, you know, they're saying they'll, they just want a single family residence. But it does give the opportunity for more housing. Um, I, I guess I'm just saying, I'm kind of throwing it out.
In either case, if they wanna build more dwelling units, other than a single ADU, they have to come back to the planning commission.
Yeah, anyway, uh, you know, it's, I, I know that I'm not answering the question, but I'm act, I, I actually could go either way right now.
Okay, and as far as, as far as VMU, the, the downside that I, the upside that I see to VMU is. They could have a commercial operation there.
Right.
Downside is, I believe, once you are VMU. You can't change the paint on the outside of your dwelling.
Correct.
Without going to the planning commission. And I see that if you don't have any plans to do a commercial operation, that would be a serious drawback.
Right. It is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood though. Um, but I, I'm tending to lead towards a residential, one of the two residential.
Lucas has his hand up, please go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, from a paint color change standpoint, is it potentially a DRP? Yes, does it typically get handled at the DE level? Yes, that's typically where it ends up. Those are considered to be something that, unless they're doing more than that, um, if it's a paint color change, it's typically handled at, at the DE level.
But if you had a, a single family residence and you wanted to change the paint. Or put new windows, or put new windows in.
Yeah, those are.
Does that require planning commission or a DE?
Typically, they start with the DRP and then they typically go down to the DE. It really is on a case-by-case scenario. And then we start having the conversation in terms of what their proposal is.
But that's in the VMU.
That's in the VMU.
The VMU.
That's in the VMU, but if.
Not in the R three.
If it's a residential area, if it's an R zone of some sort. Then that's not required, right?
Hold on, let me look.
Yeah, my sense of it was in the, in the previous case, if all the folks wanted to do at two sixteen East Matilaha was. Change the paint, they still have to come to the planning commission because they're in.
So it's, it's the C one zone, the BP and the VMU.
Requires.
What if, and that's the high density zones? They don't need to come in?
It doesn't specify those, those zones within um, subset five. Any exterior alteration.
Well, I mean, you know, this is a very unusual structure and, and. And, and um, you know, most, most of those external changes, I'm sure they can be uh director exempted, like most of the other ones are. And um, I just am, I just am persuaded by the surrounding zoning and existing conditions. And I, I just really am not interested in going to R three, the highest density. Um, without, without seeing what the heck would go, is gonna go there. And VMU does, they can't do um ADUs, so, uh, you know. And it's close to the downtown. I think if there's any future development, I can see that people would be quite interested in adding some kind of a, might be uh quite interested in adding a commercial el- element. Live, work, whatever.
So that's a vote.
That's where I stand. I, I guess I, I'm not, I'm not interested in R three. And maybe they only vote on that, but I, I think that's, that's my position.
And you're feeling verse with R two versus VMU?
Um. I might be persuaded to go with R two. But I, my pref, my strong preference is VMU because that is compatible with the surrounding zoning, and that is actually one of the uh primary uh great grounds really for what you do when you zone. You, you really try to be compatible with what you've got around you.
Okay, uh Commissioner Bennett? What would be, what would be your choice? We're just doing a straw poll here.
Sure, I prefer R two, um, but I could be persuaded on VMU if that's where we wind up.
Okay, and Commissioner Trent, I think you, you came down on the side of VMU. Is there any, either of the others acceptable to you?
Um, yeah, I, I might be persuaded to uh the R two side, but I, I do like the consistent, consistency with the surrounding neighborhood. Um, I did have a question though, um, with ADUs, you're, you're not allowed to build an ADU in the VMU. Is that true?
Lucas?
Thank you, that's, I was gonna respond to that. Uh, within the VMU, uh, you are allowed to build an ADU. That is, that is an allowed use. I just want to clarify that. Uh, Commissioner Lottis, I think you may have been referring to um uh SB, in terms of the SB nine subdivision and how that.
No, I, I'm sorry, I just, I thought that's what you said earlier, so I misunderstood.
Yeah, I, I think the VMU satisfies, um, you know, everything the applicant is trying to, to gather. Um, I don't really see a big downside to VMU outside of, you know, getting a director's exemption for changes that you want to do the exterior, but um, it sounds like, I mean, we have a lot of properties that are in the VMU. And I'm sure that they do changes quite often, and I'm sure it's handled appropriately, so I, I don't see a huge downfall with that.
Okay. Well, I think we better, I think we better vote on this then. Um, let's, let's start with the original proposal of the package as it stands with R three. Sherry, could you call the roll on R three?
Yes, Quillacy?
Yes.
Nolan?
No.
Lottis?
No.
Trent?
No.
Bennett?
No.
Very good. Let's call the roll on R two.
Quillacy?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Can I go last?
Trent?
No.
Bennett?
Yes.
Lottis?
No.
Okay, three to two for R two. How about VMU?
Quillacy?
No.
Nolan?
It's a tough one. I'm gonna say no.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
No.
No, okay. So we have three to two in favor of R two and R three and VMU both lost. So could we have a motion on the, on the case with the one amendment that we go to R two dense, R two and the corresponding land use? Yes, ma'am.
Lucas has his hand raised.
I'm sorry, yes, I see that, Lucas. Please go ahead.
Um, if it might pleasure the commission, I know that the applicant has raised their hand. I, they may want to comment here if the commission is open to that.
Certainly can listen. Please go ahead, sir. You're muted. There you go.
Thank you. Well, I, I got part of the uh answer to what, I, I didn't know what DE meant, so that's director exempt.
Right.
What is DRP?
Well, that's a design review permit.
Okay. And, and just the other point that, that I'd spoken with, well, both Mr. Cybert and uh Ms. um, Ms. um, Macaluso, am I pronouncing that right?
Yes, thank you.
That these, my recollection in talking to Mr. Cybert, it's been many months now, but that there were no fewer than seven different R three
Designations.
Parcels, parcel, no fewer than seven parcels designated to R three scattered throughout the city. So it just, it just seems somewhat. I don't know if it's semantics, but that, that some of the, the council seemed to be concerned that well, we shouldn't have an R three in the middle of VMU, but it appears that, that that's there, there, all of the R threes are scattered somewhat. I don't know, I don't know what to say arbitrarily, but there doesn't seem to be a real, a real um systematic method of saying, okay, this is gonna be the area where all the R threes are. And my recollection also, when I looked at the map, again, it's been a few months ago, is that none of the R threes were nearly as close to the city center as, as this parcel is. And as much as we understand the desire of the city to have uh parcels where people can have a commercial uh enterprise where they live, it would also seem that the city, at least in listening to previous meetings, that the city wants to, to be able to show that they can increase housing within the urban core. And that's exactly what this would do. Again, not, not gonna happen in our lifetime on my watch. But it just seems like that's really the best use for this land down the line. And that the, if the commissioners have a concern, uh, I, I, I think Commissioner Lottis makes a very good point, that well, it'd be nice to see what the project is. Well, we don't have project, because that's not really where we're gonna go. But it seems to fit the needs of the city and falls within the state mandates, which, you know, I, I know some cities are really trying to uh oppose them to say, okay, uh, let's, let's zone at R three, knowing that when a person, maybe it's one of our four daughters or someone they sell the property to, knowing that the planning commission at that time will of course see that project that Commissioner Lottis would like to see now. So it's not as if, if I'm understanding correctly, it's not as if by approving it now, somehow a developer is gonna be able to come in and go straight to the building department and say, hey, here, here's my plan for seven units. Am I, am I understanding that correctly, Mr. Cybert?
That's, that's correct.
It's a discretionary action, which wouldn't come before this commission.
Uh, when, and the result of our three straw polls on this, Mr. Weber, are that the, the sense of the commission at the moment is that we like the project, but we like the R two zone.
Sure, and I, I, I understand. I've had my hand raised for a while, so I, I'm kind of out to the fact, but
Okay.
But that's fine, uh, uh, I, we understand and thank you for the uh explanation of the uh acronyms there.
Terrific. So, thank you, Mr. Weber. Um, any more discussion here before we have a motion?
I do have a suggestion. Uh, I mean, is the, so is the applicant at all interested in having this item continued so that they could revise the uh proposed zoning, or does the, I guess, or does the commission? Um, I mean, the, the, the project is for R three zoning, so is it appropriate to um take an action tonight on some alternative zoning, or should we let staff and applicant talk about it and come back?
Yeah, I, I would agree. I think uh giving the applicant the, you know, if, if R three is not in the cards, then giving the applicant the ability to weigh in on whether they prefer an R two or a, or a VMU.
If, if this were continued to another date certain, does that involve, it doesn't involve noticing, I know, if it's a date certain. Does it involve another application and another fee by the applicant?
No, it wouldn't. Uh, this, this body could act on an R two from a, um, from a sequoia standpoint, in terms of the exemption, the exemption would fall within either an R two or an R um three designation. The exemption um would apply either way. The only difference is, is the numbers would be adjusted to identify maximum um density allowances. So instead of the fifteen, we'd be looking at instead, I believe it was eight.
Yeah.
But I think you heard from the applicant, they're, they're certainly interested and agreeable to the R two. Um, in terms of that moving forward, we could adjust that resolution and the draft um ordinance to reflect that moving forward to city council. But we would need an official action identifying revisions to the R two. Uh, that would, R two and, and I'm sorry, the general plan land use.
General plan category as well.
Uh.
Medium high density residential.
Correct. MHR.
Yep.
So is someone interested in making a motion? I can do it. I would, I would move that we approve zone change twenty one dash zero zero one with the uh revision that instead of R three zone, we use R two. And instead of high density resul- residential, I think that's the R three land use, that we have medium high density residential as a land use. Is that correct?
Correct.
And otherwise, that we would approve the package as proposed. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Nolan. Any more discussion? Then Sherry, let's call the roll on this.
Quillacy?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
No.
Trent?
No.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And let's move on to item four, general plan update. Lucas? This one is yours, I think.
This one, this one is mine. I know, um, Commissioner Trent, I think you had alluded to uh Ramy and Associates being on tonight. I hate to disappoint you, but you have me tonight. Uh, I think what we're looking for here tonight is it's kind of a, a, a bigger, broader look at um some really good uh information. We're kind of calling this the first part of kind of the meat and potatoes of what we're gonna be looking at here. Um, in your packet tonight, you have what is referred to as the preliminary land use and transportation concepts. Let that sink in. We are moving forward in this general plan update process. And in that forward moving process, we're seeing some concepts here, some kind of pencil to paper, if you will, uh, that lends itself to an opportunity for feedback. And I think that's really what we're looking at here tonight, is to allow for this document to kind of soak in. I'm gonna go through um kind of an overview of these slides. Uh, just, just so the commission is aware, we posted um in the, in the paper, a flyer uh last week uh introducing uh this idea, the concepts that are coming forward and inviting the public to come to this meeting. So when the presentation's done, certainly if the commission has any questions, uh, I think we're certainly open to that. But also, let's make sure that we open it up to the public to see if there's any sort of comments or feedback from the community on this um item, because certainly that's what we're looking for. We're looking for that feedback. Um, and then if there's additional opportunity for this to be heard again before this body, before it then goes to city council, we can take a look at that in terms of, of next steps. Uh, in terms of potential revisions. So kind of similar to the vi- vision and guiding principles aspect that this commission saw. Oh, I want to say almost a year ago, now that we're looking at it, this COVID situation has been interesting to say the least in terms of how we've been processing this. So without further ado, uh, going through this, there's kind of a to start off, we've got the purpose and overview. Uh, this document in itself is looking to introduce the work product for the next steps in the, what we're calling the planning direction phase of the general plan update. The concepts are considered kind of a sketch idea illustrated in a series of maps. I think you're seeing up to, I want to say nine maps in total throughout, three of which are um pretty, pretty interesting and critical as it, as it, as it um sketches out. And then the, the land use concepts identify areas of potential change in the community, and the concepts also identify areas of stability and enhancement, or AKA areas not expected to see any land use changes, but may be targeted for other improvements in, in the future as we, as we walk through this path for the general plan update. The, um, in terms of the pu- the purpose and scope, the preliminary land use and transportation concepts map would be an important piece to help guide the preparation of the land use and transportation alternatives during the general plan update uh next steps. The next steps would include preparation of policy alternatives. Um, that would include things such as parks, open space, resilience, and um environmental justice. From an overview standpoint, uh I'd like to kind of introduce this commission and the community at large that's listening at home uh to this document itself. And hopefully the community, as well as the commission, has a chance to, has had a chance to kind of immerse themselves into this. And hopefully, there's lots of notes. There's about forty seven slides in total. And um, I think we're looking and eager to get, get comments from, from this commission as well as the, the community as a whole. Uh, it includes slides two to four, which is the purpose and overview. Five, slides five through thirty six have um precedence. And then um slides thirty seven through forty are preliminary land use concepts. Slides forty one to forty five are the preliminary transportation concepts. And then the last two slides speak to um kind of the next steps and where we're going and, and this vision here. Um, the community engagement aspect, I think is an important piece with this as well. Um, and this is what has informed, or I guess the question is, is what has informed this document? I think it's important to, to note that the uh, the, the contract with Ramy and Associates was inked at the end of two thousand and nine. If I go back to the Wayback Train, it was really the first planning commission, or sorry, city council meeting that I was actually um a part of or involved in um kind of my first week here. Moving it forward to early twenty twenty, there were surveys and interviews with the community, business owners, the youth, we had interviews with the youth to get them involved, um city council and commissioners uh individually and in, and in small groups. There were uh background documents that include SWAT analysis, um. Those documents are critical in, in helping to develop the document that you're seeing here as a, as a policy draft. And then policy documents like the complete streets policy, um, the master, the complete streets master. And then policy documents like the complete streets policy, um, the master, the complete streets master plan. And then the, like I had alluded to earlier, the vision and guiding principles, that four page, five page. Uh, document that you, that this commission had seen almost a year ago. And then had, had forwarded those comments on to city council and city council had blessed uh, that with revisions, obviously. From a preservation standpoint. There are limited, from that standpoint, you're kind of looking at limited physical changes. Being anticipated. However, civic and open space. Um, are kind of to be developed strategies to preserve and enhance. Kind of the existing assets and address needed improvements. Um. Those include kind of the residential neighborhoods, civic, open space areas, things of that nature. Potential changes. I know uh, when we, we've just, we just got done talking about kind of a village mixed use aspect, I think there's some. Potential within the village muse, mixed use areas, I think. Getting some of that feedback, um, when we had that early workshop and hearing from the community through interviews and. And through those surveys, Bryant Street area, along Bryant Street, Bryant Circle. Have, um, there's certainly an opportunity there. The community has identified. For either change or modification to some, to some degree. And then corridor and, and gateway areas are the, the areas that lead themselves and lend themselves into the, to the city itself. So gateways tend to be at the entrances or the exits to the city. Um, the corridors tend to be those major thoroughfares like your Grand Avenue. Um, your Ojai Avenue, obviously Bryant Street is another, I think, critical example. Montgomery is, I think, another example. Uh, and then al- along that same thread, Montgomery's, Montgomery Street has kind of that C one. Look, that commercial look, but I think you've heard from the community earlier on. That the C one within that area, that kind of circular pocket area. Uh, to the north of Ojai Avenue is, is potentially ripe for some sort of change. I think um, a lot of the property owners there are interested in, in what that could actually look like in the future. Um, from a preliminary transportation concept standpoint, I think it's, it's looking at a downtown connectivity. Uh, married with neighborhood connectivity and then continued implementation of the trails master plan, I think. There's certainly a wonderful opportunity for that, and I think you even see that in the maps. Um, that have been provided. There's an existing transportation facilities map. Uh, there's concepts within the existing plans, and then there's a downtown neighborhood. Uh, connector concepts. So I think those are all interesting and certainly key aspects. Uh, that have borne this, this document that we're seeing here, the forty seven slides that we're seeing here. From a um, if I could just end with next steps and then certainly we can open it up to, to comment and um. Discussion is the um. The preliminary land use and transportation concepts map will provide direction. During the next steps in the planned direction phase, and that's what I had, had discussed in the very beginning. Of the general plan update. The preparation of the land use and transportation plan alternatives is what could be born from that. The land use alternatives may vary in land use, intensity and design. I think those are key. Points to think about. Let me just read those again. The land use alternatives may vary in land use. Intensity or density, right? That's what we were talking about earlier. And design. And that's kind of the built core of what we're talking about here. The transportation alternatives. Uh, will describe the circulation network, complete streets. And multimodal, modal network that support each land use alternative. And then to complement the land use and transportation alternatives, and I think this is a, a key aspect. Leaning forward is policy alternatives. For parks, open space, resilience, environmental justice. Which will also be prepared during the next steps in the general plan update, in terms of how this, this project has been moving forward. Uh, these policy alternatives will serve as the starting point. For the land use, transportation, safety and environmental elements of the revised general plan. As a part of this general plan update.
Can I, can I say something?
Sure, go ahead.
I, I thought that actually um, Steph is gonna do uh, the, the presentation of the slides. And I don't, I don't know if there's anybody watching this, but it seems I would rather have. The public. Uh, going through the slides, and I do have questions as we go along for um, specific slides. I don't know if that's.
Sure, I can pull up slides.
They, what's the? Uh, consensus of the commission?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't mind starting and, and just going through. I mean, some of them you may brush over. But um, I think it would be beneficial for all of us and absolutely for members of the public. To kind of get a board and see the sequence, thought process.
I, I think specifically the maps, because the maps are hard to read anyway in the packet, so it'd be nice to. Bigger vision, version of those.
Let me, let me just ask you a question. Um, are we planning on getting to um, the El Roblar tonight? I mean, I know it's on the docket, but um, to do this thing. You know, if, even if we spent one minute per slide, it's gonna be pushing us pretty, pretty late. And uh, my guess is we'll be closer to three minutes per slide, but say it's two. Uh, it's still pushes things very late. And the question is, do we have? A need to keep El Rob- Roblar moving? I, I'm getting a lot of. Questions of what's going on, who's holding it up? Is El Roblar holding it up? Is the city, meaning us, are we holding up? Is it the staff? I mean, people are sort of beginning to ask that question, and I just. If we wind up at the end of this thing saying, alright, we're gonna kick that over to, two weeks from now, you know, I'd, that's a. It's a project for a lot of people waiting.
Could, could we change the order uh, on the agenda?
That's certainly a possibility.
I'd be okay with that.
I'd be fine.
Alright.
We did get up most of the comments on El Roblar.
Yeah. Why don't we do that then, Lucas? Let's, let's move to item five. And hear from the folks at El Roblar. And then come back to at least look at the maps that are part of this presentation. I found I could just barely read them if I pulled up the packet online. And put an individual page, full si- full page, a full screen. On a twenty seven inch screen, I could just about make out where the streets were. And on an eight and a half by eleven sheet, it was. Some. Multicolored fuzz for me. But uh, if everyone is, is in agreement to uh, swap things around. Why don't we hear from the El Roblar people and Lucas, take us through that, please?
Sure, I'd, I'd uh, asked that we, yeah, are we bringing in? Okay, so we've got. The applicant and then we have Stantec representative, if you don't meet yourself.
Good evening.
Whoa.
Good evening.
Hi, can you hear us fine?
Yeah, you're getting some feedback there.
Yeah, getting a lot of feedback. Uh, Mr. Lammers, you're gonna speak to us?
Yeah, and I, I'll just open this up with, the applicant has provided, and I believe they have a presentation. That they're wanting to run through, to talk about, really focus tonight on um, on the parking. Aspects for this, for this project. And that's really the focus for tonight, just if we were to kind of frame the discussion for, for tonight. It is, it is the parking.
We're gonna.
Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you. Do you have a screen to share with us or?
Me too, just a moment.
Okay.
Hearing feedback. He's got two going on.
Yeah, if you've got more than one computer in one room, you've gotta mute them all except for one.
They should be good. Is this okay?
Yes.
Alright. Um, you can't see all of us, we're around the table here. We weren't prepared, so we. Thank you for taking the time. Um, yeah, sure, that's probably, actually I'm gonna control it from here.
Okay, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna just.
Yeah, I think I'll start. Thank you very much for having us tonight. Um. Uh, we had a really nice meeting in December and we are uh, taking the last month and considered a lot of your concerns. And we're um, we're finalizing all the historical components and have been reviewing. The initial feedback and uh, from the historic consultant have, I think we can have something in front of the H B C in the next month. So we hope that can move forward quickly. Um, and tonight, you know, as Lucas said, we really want to focus on the parking uh, concerns for the evening. Uh, we want to present our methodology. Uh, and how we got our numbers, as well as some clarity on the management plan and um, and locations that we're discussing, so. Uh, I think, you know, you know of our team, you know, we have Jeremy here and Warner and Eric. And I'm Ramin, and then we have Ginger and, and Dennis from Stantec Online, so um, they've prepared the parking study and analysis and. We let him take it from here. Great. I do want to comment on a couple things Ramin mentioned. Uh, we're feeling, we, we, we just got some initial uh, feedback from uh, our historical consultant, feeling really optimistic about it, so. Uh, we're hoping to uh, a- as Ramin mentioned, come to a decision hearing next month. That's our, that's our goal. Uh, and we've been working hard with the city to accomplish that, so. Great feedback from um, historic. It should uh, move things along on that piece, but most importantly for today and what. I think we had spent the last month uh, thinking through uh, is the meeting we had back in December and, and some of the great dialogue. And further clarity that. Uh, we think is required to help provide a, a better understanding. Of our intentions for our uses and better understanding how the parking uh, supply and operations will work. Today, um, we have invited our consultant uh, with, with Stantec. Uh, Ginger Anderson and Dennis Lammers. Um, they've been with us for the last two years. Uh, helping guide the project along, uh, have consulted on um. All our uses and the parking supply that we have available. Um, and, and I think Ginger, are you on?
I am, yes, hello.
So I have a little presentation. We're gonna try to keep it uh, brief, but really today, the goal is to have a very. Uh, clear understanding of our uses, the requirements for those uses that relates to parking, how the parking will work. And the available parking lots that we have available. And from there, we'll have, you know, in our view, what's interesting when we look at it. We're offering more parking firstly than ever has been offered at that site before. Two, um, based on the current code, we're offering more parking supply than what's available. And three, when you consider, which, which Ginger will talk about, some of the calculations the consultants use to determine demand. We're also meeting the, the conditions for parking, so. We want to make sure everyone has a common understanding of where we're coming from and making sure that we have adequate uh, supply of parking for the uses that we have. So Ginger, I'm gonna pull up the presentation. Sorry. So I have some technical.
You have to quit soon, but you're gonna lose everyone.
Okay, just a moment. Let's try this.
Have a share screen function there?
Yeah.
Alright.
There you go.
Okay. We'll keep it short. Don't worry, don't get intimidated by the number of slides. Okay, so um. Ginger, you want to take it away?
Sure. Hi, I'm Ginger Anderson with Stantec. Um, and I am a, a planner here and I work with Dennis Lammers. Who's the technical expert in terms of parking, so I'm gonna take the overview. Um, if there's a need to get. Into the nitty gritty, I'll probably uh, rely on Dennis to, to come in with the math. Um, or the particulars, but um, generally what we wanted to do was just walk through the parking study, the uh, demand study. That was previously submitted. Um, it, all of this information is in that report, but that report is a little bit lengthy. So I wanted to just kind of give the overview, the broad brush. Like uh, Jeremy said, um, the proposed parking is, is well above than anything that was. Was provided in the past. Um, we have that nineteen seventy three, you know, planning commission memo that. Um, talks about a shortfall of something like thirty, thirty plus spaces. Um, and, and that's a shortfall that's existed throughout o- over time, so um. Anyway, so this is the, the parking demand study. So there's, uh, the city ordinance, as you know, has um. A requirement for one space for each unit, plus one uh, space for each five, plus one space for a manager, additional spaces. And ancillary uses. So essentially what they do is, um, they, they kind of consider. Um, the different uses as, as distinct uses rather than a hotel use or a resort use. And so you have to kind of go through this math of, and then add them all together, so. Um, uh, when we, when we apply that to this project, the hotel would need to provide sixty one spaces. For the, the uh, proposed capacity of the guest rooms. Um, then uh, it, we would add restaurant. So for the restaurant, go back, sorry, for the restaurant. We would have one space for its two and a half seats or one space for every hundred square feet, whichever is greater. Go ahead. Um, so we've got a capacity of sixty six seats, um, or thirteen hundred and fifty seven square feet. Um, that we've then assumed a, a worst case where the restaurant is being used by fifty percent hotel guests and fifty percent others. Um, and we, we do that math. Uh, we have um, a total of fourteen spaces for thirty three seats. Or seven spaces uh, for half of the restaurant floor area. Uh, then we take the event space. Um, as a capacity and we assume a seventy five percent of those, of that capacity would be hotel guests. Um, then we um. Have a capacity of approximately ninety two people and we would multiply it. Um, thirty nine rooms at two guests at seventy five percent, so fifty nine guests would be. Um, staying at the hotel and then uh, eleven suites, assuming four guests per suite, and then seventy five percent of that at thirty three guests. So um, a note on that suites, um, the suites are really a one bedroom with like a living space. Um, so this. Math is probably a little overstated as well. Um, you know, it, it could be that somebody sleeps in the living room space. Um, but essentially the, the intent there is, is two guests per suite, so. Um, again, we're taking a conservative approach to, to how this would work out. Next slide. Um, so. Uh, we, we do some more math here. Um, we've got an average vehicle occupancy of two and a half uh, people per vehicle. This is a, an average on, on published event data. Um, so we've got uh, twenty, then we add the twenty three spaces there for um, event, event spaces, so. Um, and this will all be in a table later, so if you're getting lost, I apologize, but I, I kind of want to go through how we come up with all these numbers that we add together. So when we take that approach, the city's ordinance and a conservative approach of how many people are staying in a suite and how many people are. Staying at the hotel, um, in the restaurant or the event space, uh, we get ninety eight spaces. And there was some question on, um, you know, is, is that accurate? Is that, has this been peer reviewed type of, of thing of? You know, I, I guess a little bit of question of, um. Is, is that an appropriate number? Have we made the right assumptions? So on the next slide and in this parking demand study, this is how all of that math that I just talked about comes together. Um, for the hotel use, sixty one spaces, fourteen spaces for the restaurant, twenty three spaces for the event, for a total of ninety eight. Um, again, on the city's code. Go ahead to the next one. Um, what we do then is we, we check those numbers against the Institute of Transportation Engineering's Parking Generation Manual. And so this is a widely used and accepted, uh, manual. And what they do is they go out and take counts, um, and they publish data, uh, in order for transportation planners to use. And in their, um, guidebook, uh, they, they have different sections on how to do different, um, land uses. But what they call a hotel use, they assume lodging, uh, and its supporting facilities all under that one category of land use. So they include and assume a hotel has restaurants, cocktail lounges, meeting and banquet rooms, convention facilities and recreational facilities, rec- retail or service shops. So really what they do is they lump all of those uses. In, in the municipal code, we had to take all of those uses and add those things together. In this manual, they assume all of those things happen under one roof, under that land use description. So under those demand rates, the weekday parking demand would be fifty-two spaces and the weekend parking demand would be seventy-eight. So they further subdivide it to, uh, weekday and weekends. And so what we've, what we find by using this manual, this widely accepted and used manual is that our number of ninety-eight spaces is actually probably too conservative. Um, that, that the municipal code actually requires more parking than we probably need based on, you know, this, um, this, uh, group of experts who have decided what, what that generation rate should be. So, we're feeling pretty comfortable um, that the ninety-eight spaces is, is more than enough. Uh, the double check is the ITE manual, which came, comes up with seventy-eight under a peak, peak demand. So hopefully that helps kind of, um, fact-check that number. Um, next slide. Um, and then, um, so all of that is, is in the parking demand study that's, that's been provided to you previously. And if you haven't had a chance to look through it, that's essentially the, the overview of what it says. Um, Dennis is available if you have kind of, um, really technical questions related to that. Um, otherwise Jeremy was gonna go into showing how the spaces that we are providing, uh, where those are distributed and how those would be used.
I think it's a good time to, to pause. I know, I know, I realized, I didn't realize that actually at the time how dense we got into that conversation so quickly, uh, coming off of that last, um, topic. So sorry, um, about that. Uh, but you know, I think we, we, we were stepping back from last meeting and realized maybe, you know, we had a lot, uh, we submitted uh, on parking, um, so a lot of data. So, uh, met much of which wasn't broken down in a way that was easy, easy to understand, easy for us. Obviously, we've been looking at this for, for over about a year and a half now. Um, and most recently over the last, you know, three months focused on it. So, um, we wanted to unpack some of the findings and, and really get granular with you all to help explain uh, our thinking and how it relates to, uh, what the experts are telling us around what we need. So, um, before we move forward, is, are, are there any questions on, on the, uh, kind of requirement calculation on parking?
Uh, this is Steve Quillacy. I do have, I do have one, uh, your table. This is table two in, in your briefing. Yeah, that's, that's the stuff. Um, shows a requirement for ninety-eight spaces. Um, elsewhere you said eighty-eight. But I'm interested in looking, your map showed forty-eight plus eighteen, which is sixty-six. And if you're gonna get to eighty-six or eighty-eight or some number that exceeds your requirement, it sounds like you're starting to count the spaces behind two oh nine, two eleven West Ojai Avenue. At some point, and I didn't see this in either the table or, or your discussion at this point, and that was where your employees are parking. Uh, it sounded to me like if you were gonna get to a point of, of, uh, saying that you're providing eighty-eight spaces against seventy-eight or whatever the numbers are, that you were double counting those spaces behind two oh nine, two eleven West Ojai Avenue, counting them once for staff members, which you said they would be set aside for, and then counting them again as fulfilling the needs for patrons or guests. Could you comment?
I think we talked. Bye Ginger.
Yeah, um, I, we, we touched on it a little bit last time and, and Dennis can help, uh, help out with this one too, but um, the, the parking demand, the ninety-eight and the seventy-eight, that is for everybody. That's not just guests and restaurant, you know, that's the employees are baked into those numbers. So there's not then a separate, um, addition of, you know, two spaces per three employees or anything like that. Um, that what, the employees are included in those numbers. The assumptions are that if you have this many seats in a restaurant, um, and this many guests, that you're including the employees as well. Um, Dennis, I think that we talked about that last time as well, right?
So you're saying the ITE estimate of seventy-eight includes all the employee parking?
As does code.
Yes.
That's my understanding. Um, Dennis, if you're trying to talk, you're in, you're muted.
Am I on?
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission. Yeah, specifically to the ITE rates, the way they're built up is that ITE goes out or subconsultants or traffic consultants like me, count different hotels or different other sites, submit that data um, to ITE and they, um, compile a database. So say that for this use, and I don't have the parking event booked in front of me, there are thirty different sample sites. They counted all the parking every hour typically on weekdays and or, or weekends. Uh, there's of course no distinction between who, who is in the car. They just count the cars, the parking demand. Um, they, um, determine a peak rate based upon all those sites and use that as the parking rate. Uh, peak parking, uh, could be four or five o'clock on Saturdays uh, of a certain number and they tie it to the independent variable, which typically is the rooms. And that's how, uh, ITE, uh, parking demand works. And we apply that again to the rooms as the independent variable. So if the number is one point fifty-eight per room, that number includes all the ins and outs of parking, uh, that was counted on the peak hour. Uh, so it includes everything, uh, the events, uh, and of course, uh, if there's thirty different hotels, every hotel is a little bit different. Typically they, uh, the, the land use hotel itself has event space, has all the amenities that this hotel is also proposed, proposing. Within the IT world, uh, if we do trip generation or, or parking demands, there is the regular hotel, but there's also the resort hotel, there's the business hotel. It's all separated out. It's, it's well documented. I hope it somewhat answers your question.
I think so. I think what you said was the IT number of seventy-eight and your number of ninety-eight and whatever we come up with
Yeah.
in the code includes guests, overnight guests, patrons, management and employees.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct. That's, that's our experience also in other municipalities. It's a, it's a common kind of code item that has inclusive numbers.
Very good. Thank you.
A quick, quick question. On this slide here, uh, this is a hundred and seventeen spaces. Are you?
That's correct.
Okay, and then you're on the proposal, it's showing a hundred and nine spaces. So there's only forty at the El Roblar onsite. Are there, are there additional eight that have come to play recently?
Uh, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue on, uh, Commissioner Trent in a minute here. Um, I, I have a, a couple of visuals that are gonna support how we get to a hundred and seventeen spaces and then how we're gonna manage those. I just wanted to make sure like, our process, as, as you guys can appreciate development is, you know, here's what we want to do, what's possible. We approached Stantec, they come back with a calculation, and now we have to figure out how we're going to accomplish it. So I'm, I'm kind of, I think part of this meeting is for us to kind of translate our process and what we have gone through to determine the plan that we've submitted to you. Um, first, starting with how we arrived to the numbers and how, uh, the professional consultants arrived to those numbers, how they're supported and what assumptions go into them. And, uh, I think next I'm gonna kind of go through and break down each of the lots and how they're gonna be operating, how we get to the calculations. So if everyone's okay with it, I'd like to, I can, I can kind of proceed and, and demonstrate that.
Yeah, and, and if you could, um, highlight the, the last proposal and, and the differences between the two, that would be awesome too.
Oh, great. Yeah, I think we're talking about these eight, uh, Porta Cachir spaces that are kind of, you know, that weren't originally counted that Commissioner Quillacy really likes and supports. So we included those in there, uh, and, and you'll, you'll see those in a minute. Um, I'm just gonna break down the parking lots we have available. So, uh, this is very, very high level. So a hundred and seventeen spaces, forty-eight spaces are on the hotel site itself. Uh, eighteen spaces are, uh, are composed in a lot directly behind the hotel site. We, um, as you, as you recall, um, based on the initial feedback, uh, from the original scheduled meeting that we had in September, uh, there was concern we didn't have enough onsite parking. We were moving everything away, so we bought a parking lot uh, as part of that response. So, uh, this lot has a capacity of eighteen tandem spaces. Um, and then we also entered into a lease, uh, with what we call the Beacon Parking Lot at two oh nine, two eleven West Ojai Avenue. Uh, that's composed of, um, uh, fifty-one spaces. Twenty-nine of those are available to us after five PM and twenty-two are available to us all day that are primarily going to be designated for hotel employees. So I'm gonna walk you through, uh, some of the thinking next. This is a common chart we've used, uh, and this chart is uh, pretty dense, but it kind of explains, um, how we have to consider some of the nuances involved with uh, time of day and the conditions we have at some of our parking lots. So the far left column is the parking area, uh, two oh nine, two eleven Ventura, Exhibit D we just looked at, the onsite, two oh two North Ventura. And then we're calling short-term onsite Porta Cachir parking. I'll show you the visual in a second. That's the eight spaces, um, uh, that, uh, we're, we're missing Commissioner Trent, that we'll, we'll show, we'll call out in a minute. Um, and the, the column to the left illustrates the, the different parking spaces. Uh, the first column explains, uh, the kind of current conditions, uh, how many spaces are there currently, and then based on the calculations from Stantec, compare that against the requirements based on the uses. So as mentioned, uh, uh, as of nineteen seventy-two, the site's always been short, uh, parking, uh, in approximately thirty-four parking spaces in, in modern code. The next column is this idea of, uh, how many spaces will we, will we have available, um, uh, i- i- in operation, uh, after, uh, five PM. Okay? And the idea of kind of getting granular around after five PM is it doesn't impact traffic. Uh, and this, in this consideration, we weren't considering the uses for the restaurant. Uh, and if you recall, uh, our decision and conversation, uh, in the last meeting, we really want to make sure the restaurant is accessible to the community at all hours of the day. Um, but we're in this situation where if we, if we offer it all hours of the day, we're short parking. So, this is just to illustrate that if we didn't, um, i- i- if we, we meet the requirements of code, if we don't, uh, have the restaurant open, um, basically before five PM. The next column, uh, illustrates, uh, same kind of assessment, but considers that the restaurant's open all day. That's how you get to the delta of, of ten spaces, a negative ten spaces. And then the last column demonstrates, sorry, uh, demonstrates, um, a, uh, after-hours parking for the use of the Beacon Lot. We get the additional parking and that's how we arrive to the hundred and seventeen spaces. So, a lot of information. I think the biggest thing is, uh, pretty much every case, we meet parking requirements based on the supply we have available. We are short if we consider offering, uh, the restaurant, uh, to the public for all-day use, particularly before five PM. It's not in the best interest of the community not to do that and it's not the best interest of the business, but it's just to illustrate the conditions we're up against. This next slide, basically the same thing. The only thing that changed is the required uses based on the IT calculations that were just reviewed by Stantec. So in that case, if we wanted to take a more, uh, you know, progressive view on parking requirements, we followed the IT guidelines, we would exceed parking based on those requirements in every consideration. With the exception of existing conditions, which I know keeps being brought up around, what is the baseline? What is the existing conditions? There isn't, it's short. Uh, we don't have available parking on site, so we need to buy off-site parking. Um, this, Commissioner Trent's a visual I wanted to explain to you of how we got to the forty-eight onsite tandem spaces as well as perimeter parking. Um, the, the, the diagram to the right is our, uh, sorry, stepping back. This is a site plan of the hotel uh, project. To the right is the existing parking lot. Uh, that parking lot's gonna be used for, um, tandem parking operated by our valet staff. Uh, that is composed of thirty-one spaces in capacity. Uh, the eight spaces at the lower end on Ojai Avenue, that's just to address the changes we're proposing to the facade as well as Porta Cachir and Entranceway. It's a way better flow than exists today if any, if anyone has been to the site. Uh, but because of that, we have the ability to park, uh, up to eight vehicles. Those eight vehicles will be for short-term onsite parking. Sometimes registration, sometimes someone's there for lunch or a meal or something like that. Um, but that's gonna be, uh, accountable towards our parking. The nine spaces in the back on Matilaha, uh, those are, um, uh, spaces that we're basically reconfiguring. If you've been to that side, I think most of you have walked it, uh, you notice the, the kind of non-ideal conditions of one, the safety issues that are presented with the existing conditions of that parking and, uh, the liability involved in how the spaces are currently not standardized and somewhat dangerous and exposed to the guests. So we are restriping and, and investing in, uh, putting a retaining wall to create additional parking uh, opportunity on, on that side, actually increasing, um, space capacity. This, the parking in Matilaha, uh, just so you have this visual in front of you, in terms of who is the primary user, because that's a question we've talked a lot about. Um, who is a primary user for these parking spots? For the most part onsite, uh, it's always, it's always most likely gonna be valet unless we have a self-park request. And if a self-park request uh, is available, we'll either, uh, guide them to park, um, uh, based on time of day and availability. Most likely on Matilaha, there's a self-park option. Um, that's the best area for, uh, for guests, uh, that don't want a valet. The rest, um, of the space is mainly the thirty-one. Um, that's gonna be contained. It's gonna be primarily used for overnight guests uh, and, uh, long-term stays. This is two oh two North Ventura. This is a visual we showed before. This has eighteen space capacity, tandem parking, valet only. Uh, again, long-term stays and overnight guests. And to the extent there's availability based on the day of week or the demand, could be overflow for restaurant or events. Um, we realized, uh, a Google image of this site was not adequate enough. Uh, that was really clear. Um, so we spent time and resources and money uh, with, um, an outside consultant to, uh, recreate the site plan, um, and strike the parking lot per code and provide the ninety-degree parking requirement. Um, in that exercise, we also wanted to demonstrate to you all, uh, how we're thinking about the configuration of the spaces. Now, again, this is an extreme example. We just wanted to show you, uh, how each of the cars fits into the spaces that are available. Um, it's not the intended, um, idea of how it's gonna be used, but, uh, for the most part, um, these spaces, uh, allow us to go to a calculation of the fifty-one. It's a slight difference from what we presented last time where we had a kind of a thirty-one, twenty split. This is a twenty-nine, twenty-two split. Um, after really kind of diving into code, some of the spaces didn't, didn't cut it. Uh, so, um, as you can see, the twenty-nine spaces up top, those are available to us after five PM. Uh, the current tenant Beacon Coffee uses those and that's the time of day. I think, when do they close, um, Warner? At two o'clock. So, uh, you know, there could be a version where we get it before, but that impacts obviously some of the traffic conditions. Uh, the lower part, we'll call it just for sake of conversation, the southern, uh, parking space behind Beacon. Uh, that, uh, is composed of roughly twenty-two spaces. Uh, that we've talked about, um, since the meeting, uh, to calm some of the concerns with the community and the neighbor we received, by which we've engaged with the neighbor and have, have, uh, established some dialogue to help mitigate their concerns. Uh, we think the best user for that parking is primarily, uh, primarily employee parking. Um, it's the least It's the least impact, we can control it the most, time of day is not impactful and invasive. So we think employee is a good option for that, as well as long-term stays. You know, obviously it's not all for employee. But for the most part, it will be for the, the least impact user to the community, the neighbors. And we realize that and we appreciate the feedback. We're going to mitigate it. And we are going to provide a plan where hopefully there is no impact to any of the conditions that are there. So this is the visual, I just wanted to show you, again, a visual without cars in it, just so you get a sense of the spacing. And I'm just going to quickly run you through some of the site conditions, so everyone who hasn't seen the parking lot can see it, you know, through the lens of a, a, a user. This set of images, this is the kind of front part of the parking lot. So going back here, the upper, upper portion of Beacon, this kind of shows you the conditions that remain existing. This, again, another visual, kind of give you a sense of the parking capacity we have. This is just a, a, a view from afar. And then this is the back part of the lot where we, again, primarily looking for parking available for employees. As you can tell, that, that shows you kind of the impact to the neighbor. The far-right image is the nearest neighbor nearby. Well, let's see, do we, before we go, I was going to go into kind of the management plan, which I kind of did, to be honest, but give you a little bit more clarity and certainty around the operational component of this. But is there any, are there any questions before I move on to the management aspect of this?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, so who are the people, who parks back there now? And so they won't be, they would not be able to park there at all, correct? What you're proposing?
The people who are parking there currently?
Yeah.
Is that your question?
Yes.
Warner, do you have an idea?
I mean, those primarily were customer cards, it seemed. I mean, it's just kind of all spread out.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting, as you know, everyone seems to just park where they want over in this area, in the zone. Any time of day, it's different, but the, the many times that we go there, and obviously one of our partners on the project is the, the current leasehold owner. And, you know, I think for the most part, it's employees, you know, the, the employees of Beacon or, you know, people that are parking there. There's not, there's no really, no real way to verify, other than the fact that they will not have access to it after we are in user, we are in use of it.
Thank you.
We want this to be as low, we've studied this a lot, we've tried to engage the community on this issue. We've, we've engaged the neighbor, we've had good dialogue. We will provide solutions, we will mitigate impact. We don't imagine this being a very invasive situation. We actually believe we don't even have to use this lot, to be very frank with you all. But we want to make sure we, we have adequate parking and exceed the requirements that are set forth.
And, and the people who would be parking there would be in your control because they're your employees?
Correct.
So you could be sure that it was used first and would be loaded and unloaded in a manner that would not be offensive to the next-door neighbor who came and spoke the other, at our last meeting?
Absolutely, yes. And like I said, we actually had direct contact with that neighbor. And we are in conversation to mitigate his concerns.
And have you been able to determine, is the bulk of this parking related, I mean, to Beacon as opposed to Blue, the shop that's to the right up there?
That's correct. That's just to give you an idea of what it looks like during the day.
I have a comment. I've been there on the weekend and it's packed. I mean, during the weekday, it's probably, you're right, that's reflective. Pardon?
This is Saturday afternoon.
Afternoon is less, but in the morning, like on a Saturday or even on a Sunday. I've seen it numerous times, packed. So I'm just wondering, what's Beacon proposing for their clients or, you know, customers? Where are they supposed to park?
Well, remember, the, the, the primary lot, which we're looking at right now, is going to be used for Beacon going forward. There's, there's, I mean, during the hours of their operation, there's going to be no impact. We're only using this, this, what we're calling twenty-nine spaces after they close.
Right, okay. I mean, that part I get. I think it was more during the day.
Well, that's not really-
Especially on the weekend.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's really not, I mean, I, I hear your concern. I just, I don't know if that's the matter we're here to discuss, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that's something we can actually control in this meeting.
I was intrigued when you came up in your conversation because technically, some people may be displaced and parking somewhere else, so.
Well, but I gotta say, I've had people who have told me, oh, it's packed on, on Saturday mornings, you know, how, what are you going to do with that? Well, to me, that's off-cycle to the demand use pattern that the, that the hotel is going to have. I'm guessing, I don't know. But I mean, I would guess that Saturday morning is not the peak time. Do you, have you done any estimates on what the employee arrival and, and disposal pattern is going to be? And, and how many slots are going to be used there?
Usually it's very early mornings or evenings. That's the, the kind of general sense. If you think about the, let's just say that the primary employee for us is housekeeping, and that's a twenty-four kind of hour thing on staff. Housekeeping services usually start very early. Shifts start five, five to six A M. And anywhere from eight to nine P M. So those shifts are kind of starting on the, on the deep shoulders of the day. Restaurant is a little bit different, but for the most part, and remember, our primary user is a hotel guest. Our primary user is somebody who's staying overnight. And for that guest and that impact, the days that they come in and arrive are most likely going to be midweek. Weekends are certainly a stay pattern that we're going to have the most, most likely. But the time of day for those are usually arrivals around three P M, departures at twelve P M the next day. So those also fall without, they're not kind of falling within normal patterns of impact that relate to traffic, both guests and employee, which I think bodes well for what the concerns are on traffic.
Well, I wasn't thinking about traffic, but I was thinking about parking spaces. And, and you said the ones in the back are for, primarily for employees. All right.
I, I think that it, you know, we're going to, we're going to, we are going to understand and optimize parking needs based on our users and, and, and the, and the actual demand of our business, people actually staying there. And we're going to literally have the opportunity to designate where people park. So we might learn during the week, no one uses the, you know, North Ventura lot, two oh two North Ventura. And we might have employees parked there because it's easier for them to get to work. And that might, that might be kind of part of the learning. And that's, I want to just remind everyone as well, we have an annual condition that we support that relates to auditing our parking. Relates to understanding the data around when people park, when people arrive, how they stay, how long they stay. And that review is annual, and there's feedback, and we have to listen to that feedback, and we have to make corrections based on that feedback. So I don't, other than meeting, like, we have enough spaces that, that meets, that meets code to operate our business. We have agreed to a condition that allows us to change and get either, adjust our parking conditions or operation based on city impact, based on the data that we collect. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find what else we possibly can do that we can provide, that can provide clarity and comfort around our plan.
A quick question. Based on the, your, your new calculations, including the eight, is there any variance that you guys have outlined? I know we, prior, we talked about a potential parking aloof and a shortfall of three spaces. Is that still the same?
They can see us now. Well, you know, we, we're open to any, to be honest, any, any kind of solution. We've been talking with staff on this issue a lot. It's a point of perspective, to be honest, around how you want to determine what the variance is, if there even is one, frankly. But yeah, we're open to any, any solution. The solution that's really, to be very honest, there's two kinds, two kinds of things I want to point out. One is, we can meet code, but the restaurant's not going to be open to the community before five P M. We can meet code and we can operate the way we want, but I don't think that's what we want to do. No, it's definitely not what we want to do. But that's how we meet the conditions and requirements, is to not, not open it before five P M, our services to the community. The second option is just understand precedence in the community. Everyone's been granted parking, it seems like, around that has zero parking for their uses. Just recently.
I mean, we have, yeah, more parking than we've had historically at the site. I think if you go up and down Ojai Avenue, you look at any restaurants that are open, you know, we meet our hotel conditions, but for, most of the restaurants on Ojai Avenue don't have any parking. But we have significantly more than any of them, but, you know. So I think our question is, what, what would you like us to find? And we'll find it. I think we're meeting the demand. To Jeremy's point, if, if we, you know, right now, there is a variance that we would need, which would be until five P M to open for lunch to the community. If we don't do that, then we don't need the variance, but the only variance would be that, 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 that one. But we, we don't want to do that. We'd like to stay open to the community.
And Lucas, this is Warner Ovink here. We've spoken at length about, you know, the two new restaurants that have just opened, you know, one directly across the street, Rory's, it's opening, it has have zero parking requirements. And then the Duchess that opened at Azu, you know, has over a hundred and thirty seats and has forty-five employees with zero parking. And so if we were allotted a variance, however that worked for those two restaurants, to not have the fourteen parking spaces required for our restaurant, we would meet code at all times.
Let me respond to, to both of those, because I think it's an important piece here as we navigate through this. So the Hotel Orobler has been closed for some time, and it's purely because of the fire. Reopening takes what were kind of spa uses and reintroduces them as rooms. So when you do that, you're, you are then opening the book for parking, and that's really what we're looking at. Now, historically, if you look at it, I mean, to, to their point, there have been these allowances for and, and understanding that there's been this shortfall of parking. I can't speak to what was done in the past. I mean, we're talking about two examples that have been within, you know, the, the role that I'm, that I am identifying here as a director. Azu is one example, that's a change in ownership. There is no reevaluating parking for that. Now, if they were looking to address or intensify their use, then absolutely, we'd be having that conversation. That's not, that's not true with that, with that use. The second one is, I think, what, what's, what was the jester and is now? What's the use?
Rory's.
Rory's, thank you. That's a historic use, and there is no intensification of that use either. And on top of that, the whole reason why that, that business ended up having to close is because of an issue with a wa, with water damage to that site. So we've taken all those things into consideration with that use. This one is a little bit different. Hold on. This one's a little bit different because we're talking about increasing the number of, of rooms from what it was previously and reintroducing it. Historically, was it that number at one point? Sure. I think there's some data that shows that it was up to forty-nine, but I'm not sure that I'm seeing it all the way up to fifty. So it's opening up the playbook from a parking standpoint.
Can I just ask a question about that? Are, are we really arguing about one room?
That's one parking spot.
I mean, because I, I counted forty-nine rooms in the history, and I'm seeing fifty now. So this is all about one room?
One room from what it was historically, right?
Right.
But in terms of the, the units that were converted to spa, I want to say it's a total of either four or six, six rooms.
Right, but we've also had that historic shortfall, you know.
There were, there were three, there were three rooms, I believe, so it's-
I think if you're looking at the, the whole downtown, I mean, you look at these, you know, special events you have downtown, you have, you know, the Libby Bowl, which has twelve hundred seats and has no parking, you know. Again, I, I think we're providing ample amount of parking. The only place we're short is daytime for the restaurant, you know. And that, that is the one area we're short. Everything else we've covered with what we've presented. So that's why we're just trying to figure out, what, what is it you'd like to, to move this forward? I think we're, we're stuck in a position right now where we're not constructing the hotel, and that's not to the benefit of the city, it's not to the benefit of us, and, you know, or maybe it's something where we can get a permit to start our work and let's figure out this parking over the next year and a half that it's going to take to construct this thing. But if we keep, like, going through like one spot or two spot here, and we could sit here for months and, and never build anything.
Right, I, I think this is Ginger at Stantec, and I think the other piece of this too is it's entirely within the Planning Commission's discretion to say that what they've provided or proposing is more than enough or enough, even if before five, the numbers say it's minus ten. I think you have it in your, your discretion to say, hey, that's plenty. Or, or even that what we're providing is, is more than enough and say, you know, we could strike this whole parts of it, or, you know. So, like, I think, just to echo what Ramin said, you know, slicing and dicing over one spot or one room does seem kind of flying in the face of what we're, we're trying to accomplish, which is to reopen the hotel. So I'll, I'll just kind of interject that and, and, and hope that the Planning Commission can, you know, u, use your, use your powers and help us move forward in, in a way that we think is, is totally reasonable.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Have you, this is addressed to the El Roblar team. Have you explored leasing any other existing parking? In the downtown area?
We, we have looked at it, and, and I think there's options out there. I think we've gotten pushback from the city as far, you know, there's, there's different concerns as, as, as the, as far as controlling the lot. And so I think if we lease something, you know, the question is, what happens if your lease runs out? And you, you know, or the owner wants to sell the property and things like that. So we went, bought the property across the street. The, the, the property down the street that we are proposing, we controlled that lease for, I think, another fifteen, sixteen years. So the, these are items that we control, and that's why we're presenting this. I think there's a number of options directly around us that we can look at and present. But I think, you know, a, anyone can poke holes in it based on not controlling, you know, controlling the property like we do. Everything we're proposing right now, we have a stronghold over for the next fifteen years at least, or are we on it?
I think Jamie Bennett brought up a really good point, and we really arguing about one or two rooms. Feels like we're being subjected to real hardship over something that really shouldn't, really substitute.
So let me ask you a question, just, just to be clear. Are you short fourteen spaces? And that would be the spaces you would need to open the restaurant up for lunchtime. Am I understanding that correctly?
For ten spaces during the daytime only.
So you're short ten spaces if you wanted to open up to the public from noon to five?
Correct.
About approximately.
Anytime, we want to do breakfast too, obviously. That's also curated.
So basically, anything before five, you're short ten spaces, and that's tied in technically with the restaurant?
Correct.
But there is a caveat here. I mean, it depends on which, which parking figures we decide to use, whether it's code or whether it's the I T E. So if it is the I T E that we decide, you know, meets our standards or our- So if it is the I T E that we decide, um, you know, uh, meets our standards or our, uh, we feel that that's adequate, then, um, well, the, the only issue is, um, at some points during the, their event holding and, um, the restaurant with the off-site parking, but they, but that, if we use the I T E, then there's a lot, there's a, if we decide that that's adequate, there's a lot, lot fewer problems in terms of the parking, parking numbers.
And that's the seventy-eight, correct? Oh, sorry.
That was seventy-eight versus.
Yeah, that's the seventy-eight. Right, okay.
Right, okay. Commissioner Trent?
Yeah, just clarification. We're not voting on anything tonight, right, Lucas?
No, we're not.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, okay, good deal. Um, okay, so we're really just talking about ten space lives during the day. That's, that's really what it is, right?
Correct. And if you think of the daytime in Ojai, lunch business.
It's during the weekends.
It, it's really, it's not an issue. Average hotel occupancy in Ojai is fifty percent in the week, during the week. We're not, we're gonna, it's been that way for as long as they started collecting lodging data in this community. So.
Right.
Which we're, we're.
Again. We're looking at weekends only.
Yeah.
Pretty much, yeah.
Well, I, I might take exception to that because we have a lot of festivals that go during the weekend and I, I dare say the hotel rooms are booked on those occasions and that, those are, those are multiple weeks during the year.
I might be right. At an, at an annual average of occupancy demand that, that's collected, it's, it's, I hear you. There, there are certainly exceptions, absolutely. As there are weekends that are not busy in Ojai.
And, and, and also this doesn't include the on-street parking that you guys will actually have added, um, to. Oh, what is that? I'm trying to think of the street name.
Three spaces in total in the perimeter to reestablish parking.
I think it's three spaces and the sidewalks, of course.
Yeah.
This, this doesn't include those, correct?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Haney, you have a question?
Hey, I, I, first of all, I wa- I'd like to thank all of you. The Commission, um, and Jeremy and your team and, and, cuz I don't, I really don't know you all that well. But this is, this process is taking a considerable amount of time and, and I recognize that, you recognize it cuz you're spending money, um, and the city's losing money. It's, it's real, it's a real interesting way to get things accomplished in a small community, but, but that is what it is. Um, you know, when I listen to this, just for the, the, this debate for the first time, if there was any giving, it sure seems like a restaurant in the downtown corridor. Especially this type of restaurant is gonna be serviced or is gonna be serving people that actually are guests in the hotel and walk-up people versus people driving up. So I think if there was room to give and take, that would be one of the areas that I would be looking at. The only thing I haven't heard in any of the discussions. Uh, the trip count, taking a car that pulls into your parking lot and then you drive it over to another parking lot. How is that, um, uh, counted for? In mitigating that your traffic and the community's traffic concerns? Um, especially when I look at the five o'clock time, you know, three o'clock to five o'clock on, on the one fifty is, um, good luck. Um, so I'm just wondering, I hadn't heard any discussion on that, but, um, I, I just wanna go back to this, the, the, these are great commissioners. They're smart, they're bright, they're, um, willing to do whatever they feel they can do, but they also are accountable to the community. And you guys seem to be smart and bright and, and on it. And I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say this clearly tonight, I think you two guy, you two teams can figure this out. Uh, I don't want it to come to us on an appeal. I don't want it to come to us as being the deciders. I think that, that this, these two bodies, I think with, with the work that Jeremy, you and your group are doing and how hard you're going at it and the ability for the, uh, Planning Commission to listen and to, um, um, take into consideration all of the community needs as well as your needs, I think there's a win here. Um, and I like, sure would like to see that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aquilacy?
Yes, go ahead.
Comment, um, so you know, earlier this evening, we had, um, another item on the agenda. Not, nothing as large as the, the El Roblar parking completely different, but an issue. Um, I wanted to kind of throw out there the potential, and this is for the, something the city to possibly look at. We have places in town that have been identified where we could have more on-street parking and we don't, and we could. And I'm, this is kind of a general thing and it wouldn't be, the parking wouldn't be allotted specifically to this project. But it's definitely within the down, and it's right outside the, um, pedestrian enhancement district. But it's within walking distance of downtown. And so we're talking about potentially this project. Um, Azu, um, the new, the Rory's, all these restaurants downtown that don't have adequate parking according to the code, but we could add more parking and also to make people aware that there is parking, um, down Montgomery Street, right behind Libby Park. Now, you may, may see that's too far of a walk, but I don't know if I go to Santa Monica or if I go to Santa Barbara or even if I go traveling out of the country. You know, you park and you end up walking a lot cuz you don't wanna drive around to find another parking space. So I'm just throwing that, this out, maybe I'm sharing this with my fellow commissioners, trying to say this could be a valuable project. I think they're doing a great job. We're not voting tonight. But I, I want the community, the local community to be able to be a part of this, which could definitely mean having lunch there or breakfast. And we want it to be a community asset, not just for tourists. I'm, I'm totally into the tourist as well. But I'm definitely into serving our local community. And so I'm just throwing this out to kind of be creative. And, you know, look at, are there other opportunities? That's the only reason I'm bringing that up, or considerations to make something like this happen. Just to share.
It's a great consideration. And, and going back to your initial question. You know, we feel strongly about having adequate parking. We really do. We've put a lot of time and energy. We bought a parking lot. You know, I, we've, we've, we've tried really hard to accommodate some of the conditions and considerations of the community to limit the impact while providing a good experience for everyone. Um, we're also handcuffed to conditions that could prevent us, uh, from operating our parking, to be honest, at some point in the evaluation. So we're open to, I think, kind of some of the questions, uh, Mr. Haney, you mentioned about a compromise and collaboration. I think this process demonstrates that, but also some of these conditions enforce that. We're talking about a parking problem that no one can really adequately explain uh, or, or validate that there actually is a problem. And we have this perceived problem of parking where we don't really know the impact as it relates to our site and our conditions. And so it's a, it's a, it's a really hard conversation to have when we don't really have information around us to, to, other than code, which we agree is supporting that, and we have other calculation methods we supported. But we're, we're feeling really, uh, exhausted, honestly, by trying to accommodate things that we believe, uh, meet the obligations and requirements we have and are open to suggestions once those, um, once those conditions are presented to us, uh, through a review. We're investing a lot of money in technology and staff to manage a parking operation that has never been done in the community. Never, other than another neighboring site outside in Ojai Valley Inn, but we will have more information about parking in our core, uh, than any other business today. Um, and then information, I think, can be useful to help the city understand, uh, the traffic flows of demand of when people are coming in and out. So. I think we're doing a lot, is, is a short answer, and we are open to exploring, uh, finding off-site possibilities. Uh, we had one before, uh, September meeting, um, that fell out, but we, we, we're open to finding more if we need to. If the business requires it.
Commissioners?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more, one more question. Um, and I think we brought, talked about this last time, and I don't know if it's future presentation, but, uh, pedestrian flow, you guys talked about that, like how folks will get from the parking lot over at the Beacon over to the hotel?
Well, it's a great question. Um, I think we're still, uh, determining, um, uh, Lucas and, and, and us are, are still deciding if that, uh, that lot's gonna be self-park or valet-operated. We're, we're obviously in favor of having it managed. I think it's better for everyone, uh, but, uh, we haven't really gotten to those level of details yet, um, until that's figured out.
But we think, I mean, yeah, I mean, if you look at it, the, the pedestrian flow would be minimized if it was operated by the valet. I mean, if we look at the employees in the back and they can walk themselves to work and they know where to park, great. In the front, when we have to use it, if it's a valet and one person is crossing the street and knows where to park, I think that's a much cleaner operation than, you know, letting someone self-park there.
Yeah, there are two, there are two lighted crosswalks there, one at Cuyahoga and one at Ventura.
Yeah, it's just wayfinding's difficult, uh, you know, anyone who hasn't been to Ojai or somebody in the community telling, describing to them where to self-park and then having them wander back. Uh, average count is two and a half people per car. I don't, I mean, I, it's a lot of, it feels like it's a lot of people potentially that we're gonna have to look out for that presents probably more liability to us, um, as a business than otherwise.
When, when we're done with parking, I have some questions on the management of parking, so.
Sure.
Well, and I, I think I brought this up last time, but maybe some sort of, uh, you know, a shuttle that goes over and picks folks up and.
Uh, sh- I'm sorry, did you say shuttle?
Yeah, just some sort of shuttle from the hotel to the.
Oh, like a, a, a cart or something?
A cart?
Yeah.
Little cart.
We're absolutely open to that.
Neighborhood electric vehicle, they call it.
Yeah.
Here you go.
Uh, Lucas, did you, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I, I, uh, I sense that there is a large member or a large crowd within the community that probably wants to speak on this item as well. I know we've been having a really good feedback here from the commission, but I wanted to just remind the chair of that.
Okay.
Uh, Councilman, uh, uh, Lottis. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, I just wanted to show you one thing, uh, that you brought. I did wanna just call attention to this. I didn't, didn't cover it. But you asked about, uh, parking for bicycles. Um, and, uh, there's kind of a cou- couple of things that we intend to do. Um, one, we're, we're in conversations in, in, in great detail around a, a formal, a partnership with a mob shop. The mob shop is directly adjacent to the hotel. Um, as you can see in the far right image, that's our hotel site in proximity to where the mob shop exists. Um, they have tons of, uh, parking, uh, for bikes. Uh, they are gonna be our partner of managing our bike program. So they will offer guests, um, the ability to use bikes, uh, during their stay with us for, for any use. Uh, guests in the community who are going to be a patron of the restaurant, uh, can park there. Uh, we'll also have a designated site. We don't know exactly where, but, um, uh, we will have it to the corner of Ventura and Ojai Avenue. We'll have adequate kind of bar, bike parking, safe bike parking for people that are, uh, in the community that wanna bike over to the hotel or restaurant. So I think both, um, you know, obviously great partner next door that has a great service for our guests, but also I will look after our, uh, bike program for also patrons in the community.
Thank you. That was probably Commissioner Nolan.
I thought you mentioned, I'm pretty sure it was you. Uh, I'm pretty sure it was you.
Maybe so.
One of the Cathys.
And Lucas, I just wanted to be clear on your point with the uses of the hotel. I mean, I would, we would just be asking for a director's exemption just on the fourteen spaces for the restaurant, not for anything having to do with the room count.
Yeah, and it, it would be, I mean, I, I had the, to Warner's point, it would be a, um, um, it would be minor conditional use permit to allow for reduction in the parking. Um, and they've, they've applied for that and that's, that's in for, for reviews and a part of this as well, so.
Okay.
Yep.
So would that, is that what you're, that would be to use the I T E numbers? Is that what you're saying? That would require a minor variance?
Well, we're looking at reductions and, and per the code, if you're looking at reductions in parking, we've got to, um, take a look at it from a minor conditional use permit standpoint.
I see.
And at that point. Yeah, then you work it backwards in terms of, okay, so which standard are we applying? And is it the I T E? Or is it the, the code, or is it some sort of a, a mixture between the two?
If it's the I T E, then we're, we, we don't need a reduction then if you're using the I T E, correct?
Right, I mean, the way I wish the I T E, it's, it's a, a less, a lesser threshold from a parking standpoint, right?
I think, I, I think this, this is a, um, this is a legacy project. This will be around operating for hopefully many, many years beyond our time, uh, under our, um, kind of lineage and team. We're gonna have reviews and we're gonna learn, like, we're, we're making, I, I'm really concerned that we're kind of making assumptions around things that we have no information to really understand the impact. And I think because of this, it is a complex offering. We're, we're proposing valet. It's a new offering to the community. We're proposing off-site lots that are managed is a new con- consideration. We might be wrong, actually. Uh, we might be very wrong. We might realize that, uh, one, we don't need the lot. We might realize that, uh, we need more parking, uh, at certain times of day to optimize it. We might realize, oh my God, why are we even offering valet parking? Because it costs us so much money per year. We're gonna learn a lot as we begin to open and we're at this point, to be honest, that we're, we're, we're we're losing time, we're losing commitment from our bank, we're losing, we're, we have, we're under huge hardship financially every month we carry on. So we have a condition built in where we review our plan and, and things are made, and I feel like that's a great check and balance that we are one hundred percent in support of. So talking about ten spaces is i- in the context of what were this transformative use that we're considering here is, I think, uh, very short sight. But, uh, you know, it's, I, I don't, I don't know another, we're open to suggestions around providing information uh, to find another way to provide comfort. We're very open to that. I don't wanna make it seem like we're against that, but we, we have we've, I've, I've spent more time on parking than I ever have in my entire life. And I am, I'm so over it and I wanna get back to what I'm good at. And that's not parking, so, um. Well, well, and also I think, I think we've exhausted everything we can do on our end based on direction from city and, I mean, I, I, I don't know any other businesses purchased a parking lot to get their project through. So I, we've kind of, I think we're at the end of our road where what, what, with what we can do based on the conditions we've been given. Buying that parking lot, though, to be honest, was a better decision. I mean, that process guided better decision. I think that was a good decision for us. On the whole, like, I will totally admit that. I know, I know, I know you mean that, but I think that was a good decision.
But I think, you know, and just looking at this, and, uh, again, I think we said earlier, we can debate this for a long time. I think the key for us is getting our shovels in the ground and moving forward on construction. And if we wanna, you know, if there's a way to have us move forward and have like, you know, the use discussed over the next year and a half while we're going through this, then we can do that. But I think what we wanna avoid is just having this be the stumbling block and sitting on it for another six to eight months.
But that's why we're so acceptance, uh, so accepting of that condition to review early.
Sherry?
We do have, um, that neighbor, Chris Land, uh, with his hand raised and another person in that neighborhood, Hans Nielsen. You want me to let him in to talk?
Uh, well, I, I had a couple of questions for the applicants and we probably, probably can dispose of them fairly quickly and then
Sure.
and then we ought to get to the public hearing. Um, I'm looking now in the packet, I'm up on page thirty-seven where we're talking about the parking lot lease agreement, gentlemen.
Oh, yeah.
In that first paragraph, it says there's a separate LLC to do the valet parking. I'm curious why you did that. Who comprises the management of the El Roblar Investment Property Manager LLC? That's the, evidently the parking arrangement. And are these persons different from the management of El Roblar Investment? And are these persons different from the management of El Roblar Investment Property Roman II LLC? Or is it the same, same set of directors or?
Yeah, we, we have a, I'm happy to follow up with that organizational chart of our partnership. We have a joint venture that operates both property ownership of the hotel and we have a management entity that manages the hotel. We also have El Roblar Property Number Two, which you're mentioning. That's actually for the Ventura lot. The Ventura lot is, was, was purchased obviously later and is owned by our partnership, so.
So you have three LLCs here.
Yeah, we have more than that. But we have, but they're all, they're all, they're all under the same umbrella of ownership. One's a property manager, one is the owner of the actual building.
The property manager is the parking people?
The parking, the, the hotel manager, it's called the hotel manager, is the parking manager. Hotel manager is El Roblar Investment Property Management LLC.
That's all us.
That's all us, yeah. That's all us. That's simple answers. It's all us.
I was, I was just curious, okay, you say you have more than three LLCs. You've got one to own the property, one to run the hotel, one to run the valet parking operation.
Correct.
And there's something else?
Yeah, one that owns the parking lot.
So the 202 North Ventura is owned by the fourth LLC?
Correct.
And it's operated by, we'll call it the second LLC?
Correct.
Okay, do the people that do the parking at 202 North Ventura also do the parking at the southeast corner of the property, of the main property?
Yes. All, all managed employees are going to be under the same operating company, regardless of it's valet or.
Okay. The other, the other, the other thing I was curious about, on page 38, it's talking about rent in your agreement. And it doesn't specify what the rent is. It's probably none of our business. But I'm curious if, if, if the, either, either it's the owners of 202 North Ventura or it's the valet parking operators that are paying rent to, let's call it the core business that owns the property. Since you had stated previously that the valet parking was included in the rooms, what, what income do these other organizations have to pay rent?
Hi, if I may, this is.
Is that tips? Are they just going to pay you out of tips? Or is there some money that moves back and forth from the hotel operation to the valet parkers? And then comes back as rent or?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
By the organization.
We can hear you, Ginger, yeah.
Hi, this is Ginger with Stantec. Chair Colossi, I'm not sure what, what, what we're getting at with discussing how it's set up. The project description, the site plan and the conditions of approval run with the land. So it doesn't really matter how the entire, you know, how their LLCs are, are set up. In terms of land use, they're, whoever it is, is still going to be subject to the same conditions and parameters that you guys set forth with, with your hopeful approval.
Agreed. Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll, but I'll take a minute to answer the question. I think it, the arrangements of the lease, understand, are set up in a way because there's intercompany relationship. Our partner in our, in our investment for the hotel also owns a leasehold on the Beacon lot. So there's an intercompany relationship there that has no bearing as it relates to how, how ultimately the parking operation will be operated. It just happens to be the relationship between those entities. That's all. Put it this way, the four of us on the applicant side own the building, own the parking lot, own the leasehold related to the components of this property.
And you also do the parking.
We also do the parking. We also manage the hotel. We also, you know, make, you know, meals. You know, all, all of the management of the operation and, and, and components described in the project description are operated by the hotel manager, which is us. We will have a management team that will be focused on those different components, including the parking.
Okay, I kind of, I kind of understand that. The, the, part of the reason that I ask is that this, this eventually, this case will come down to a legal arrangement between the city of Ojai and somebody. And I can't figure out who that somebody is. Because maybe the city of Ojai winds up with a relationship with four different companies. They have a relationship with a company that does parking. They have a relationship with a company that, that owns the property. So there's tax implications and all sorts of stuff. I'm just, I'm trying to understand, because what I see in this case here, or I'm sorry, not in this case, but in the case of what we saw on the 8th of December, I guess it was, or an earlier meeting, was, was an implied relationship between the city and, and this Roman numeral two investment property LLC. And, and so all the others have separate relationships with the main business that has the relationship with the city? Is that how it works?
The, the short answer is your relationship with us is with the property and the operation. That's it. The, the detail around who owns the entity does not matter. The ultimate relationship with the city is the upper tier entity that owns the property management. That's, that's the simplest way I can explain it to you. There are different financial arrangements that warrant having separate employees own different property. That's honestly not relevant for this conversation. Has nothing to do with operation or liability. Who you're, who you're contracting with owns the building and the relationship to the management.
Okay. Sherry, let's, let's open the public hearing and, and bring somebody in.
Chris Land. Chris Land is on.
Yeah, this is Chris Land. Thank you very much. And I'll try to keep my remarks brief because you guys have been at this for a long time, not just tonight. But it's one, my, a couple of observations. One is that it seems to be at this point that a lot of the talk is around managing or finessing the use of the lots at Beacon and finding out what the details are. And then there's also this question of the actual numbers needed, which I, which I, you know, it sounds like there's a chance that we might be looking at the I T E threshold, which seems to make sense to some people and that some kind of compromise needs to happen to get this forward. I just want to make sure that everyone remembers the reasons, we talked about last time, why the Beacon lots were really not a great option. And I don't think I need to go through them all, but there's the distance. There's the fact that employees may not even really want to use those lots because they'll probably just park closer to the hotel. And I think that everyone can imagine the many, the many ways it'd be tough to manage. And the developers of the hotel have been in our, my conversations with them are open to taking our ongoing input and trying to manage any problems. But even that's kind of a burden on us and our neighborhood. We don't really want to be in the position of helping to manage these lots. It would have been one thing if they were valet park, but that's bad for other reasons. The self-park by employees and self-park by long-term guests also introduces lots of issues. So I've written those in, written comments that I submitted to the commission so that you can look at that and just be reminded of the things that you all talked about last meeting. The other side is the city's role in this and I, and I kind of harken back to something that Commissioner Nolan said, which is this idea of kind of a neglected systematic approach to parking on a kind of holistic basis for the city. And I know I've talked to the, the community development director and he's, you know, been collecting in lieu of fees and that's certainly one mechanism by which the city can accrue funds to actually make a more holistic solution. And you talked about making available more street parking. I just think there's lots of potential lots that either the hotel or the city could somehow contract for or purchase or develop that are closer to the hotel site within the city limits that would kind of help everybody in the downtown area alleviate some of the parking concerns. So I just want to really urge you guys. I know it's, feels late in the day in these conversations tonight and the ongoing burden of working to the solution. It seems like something's in the works though. As we can look at maybe a lower, agreeing on a lower threshold of parking need and making some creative sort of holistic decisions and maybe getting the city involved and freeing up some parking that would not just help the hotel, but all the other new and growing businesses in town and the theater when it comes back online. So, and, and also just not to forget the interests of the people that back up to Beacon, that, that lot will be a burden in many ways if that, if that goes through. So I hope we can avoid it. And I think if these other solutions can be explored, that can be accomplished. So I think that's about it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Land. Sherry, who's up next?
We have Hans Nielsen.
Please go ahead, sir.
Hi, Sherry, Lucas. Good to see you. Hey, I can't tell Jeremy, is that Eric behind you? Sitting there? No?
He's over here. Hold on. He's, he was behind me.
Oh, because his dad was one of my teachers at Thatcher and that tells you how old I was. Hey, I'm with Chris. I live right here on Topa Topa Drive, so I don't need to go into what Chris just said. But what I did want to, I did want to offer this, parking is a problem. So Friday nights in the evening till Sunday night, I think there's a parking lot right across from the city hall that's empty during the weekend. And it's close to the police station, so maybe that is usable. Also, the elementary school on Montgomery's got great, well, it's got a nice U-drive in there too. It would seem that maybe parking overflow for you all might be workable with them. Just saying. Hope we can get it all worked out that way. And that's all I have really got to contribute here, but thank you.
Thank you, Hans. Thank you, Hans.
Thanks, you, Mr. Nielsen. Sherry, we have another speaker?
No, no more raised hands.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll close this area of public comment. It's not a public hearing because we're not making a decision tonight. But maybe some, some final thoughts from commissioners as to what could or should be done, or I, I know we're all waiting for that historic resource report and then a meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission before we make a decision. I have to say, I have spoken with Brian Akins, the Chair of the HPC. And he has said that whenever that Historic Resources Report arrives, he is perfectly willing to call a special meeting of the HPC to consider it so as not to hold us up with the fact that they only meet once a month. So I think within the, the cumbersome, slow-moving operations of government that we're all used to, no offense, Lucas, I think we're doing what we can tonight. And, and I'd like to, if, if you have it within you, to give the applicants any more thoughts that you have. We've talked about parking and parking management and locations. And how about you, Vice Chair Nolan? Any final thoughts for the applicants?
Yeah, I, I, I do have a couple of thoughts. I think one of them is, and I'm not sure if this is just between the applicant and staff to figure out what that threshold number is. If it's the 78, which could potentially solve part of the problem, there was that. Then tonight, we also were made aware that potentially a minor conditional use permit could be applied for in regards to a reduction in the parking. And, and then also the thought about, well, even the, one thing that the member of the public just said, Hans, maybe, and I think there's potential to look at another existing lot for leasing it. I mean, I feel like there's some options out there. It's just really about dialing it in. And is that something that's going to happen between the El Roblar team and staff? And then it comes back to us. Tonight, we can't tell you exactly what to do, but I, I feel like it's going to happen. We just have to do it again.
Yeah.
But it looks like there are options out there. So I, I mean, it doesn't feel like it's not going to happen. I mean, I can't, we're not voting tonight, but I don't know. I think that's my feedback for the moment.
Thank you for the feedback. And I would say we are, we are working really closely with staff on that solution. So I, I believe there's an option as well.
I, I just had a phone call from Chris Gardner and he said, Sherry, evidently you cannot see him. He would like to speak.
Yes, I could see him, but he didn't have his hand raised, so that's why I didn't put him on.
There he is.
I did. Sorry about that. So yeah, I'm, have not been to the last meeting, actually, because I didn't see it on the agenda. But I did go to the, gosh, I think it was the November 3rd meeting that was rescheduled. So I am new and to the, to the conversation, I own the property at 204 North Ventura Street. So I've, you know, written a report with some issues to the commission. So hopefully they'll, they'll take a look at that. And you guys have discussed a whole lot of stuff here. I mean, I guess I would tell you a couple of things. One, at that 204 location, it's a rental. It's got four units in it with four families in there. And we're right adjacent to the, not a parking lot that, that was purchased, but an empty lot that was purchased that's going to be turned into a parking lot. I think that's a very substantial difference. The primary issues I have with the project, although I generally support it, is while I did some remodeling on my property a few years ago, I was required to go from four onsite spots to eight onsite spots in order to get my permit. So I understand the burden that El Roblar thinks it's facing, but I also want them to understand that it's not a unique burden. Even individuals have to suffer through the, the arrows of the planning department. So with that said, I would really like to see them keep their 50 onsite spots rather than turn them into something else that's probably related to, you know, making the, the property more profitable and reduce the use of the onsite, or excuse me, offsite parking spaces. I am concerned, as Steve mentioned, the issue with the lease company. I'm concerned about things like liability protection for neighbors if we have problems with noise, this, that, and the other. You know, who are we talking to? Are we talking to El Roblar Hotel? Are we talking to some management company that, you know, has no assets, et cetera, et cetera? I'm very concerned about, you know, valet and/or self-parking. I live next door to the Ojai Valley Inn. So I have a lot of experience with valet parkers. They are not the most courteous, quietest people in the world. The plan for the 202 site has never been discussed with me. It's parking 18 cars on a very small lot. Some of those are, most of those are all tandem parked. And some of those tandems require possibly the movement of four to six other cars to extract or park a car into that spot. The majority of those spots, at least half of them, are within four to five feet of windows of residents of the next lot. So you can imagine at night or whenever, early morning, people go to move those cars. We're going to hear slamming doors, starting engines, et cetera, literally within feet. Right now, the plan I saw doesn't look like it has any setback between the driveway that's going to be paved over on the empty lot and the property line. So one, I think it's a probable noise issue, a nuisance issue, and even a potential fire issue, right, with cars parked four feet from a building. Even a potential fire issue, right, with cars parked four feet from a building. So I'd like to see some more things in this plan and and I hope the Planning Commission will will look at some of the suggestions I provided. To provide some mitigations for that. And I'm also certainly open to a conversation with the El Roblar team. I'm kind of disappointed. They, you know, didn't reach out um, to me as the owner of that lot. And it's been difficult, quite honestly, to get notification for what's going on. The one notified meeting was canceled. With date uncertain and the only way to find out about these things is to keep a pretty tight eye on the uh, Planning Commission. Uh, agenda. So um, with that, I appreciate the time, thank the committee and uh. Also, again, I would uh, offer a conversation to the El Roblar team to see what we can do to improve your uh, proposal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gardner. Sherry, we have exhausted the waiting room?
As far as nobody else is raising their hands, that is correct.
Okay. Uh, I'm sorry. Yes, Lucas?
Uh, I'm seeing Meg Goodman had raised her hand, but now I'm not seeing, she's put her hand down, it looks like. Oh, it's back up again. There is one other person that I'm seeing in the waiting room.
All right, well, let's hear from her, Meg.
Well, I just wanted to say how uh, impressed I am with how much these guys have done to mitigate the parking needs. And that parking isn't is a problem in Ojai, but I think what they've done is really impressive to get this property back. Into the works in Ojai and provide a, you know, it's gonna be a really a good asset. Uh, the fact that the theater and Rory's don't have any parking, I mean, that's always been an issue, but. I think these guys have have done an amazing job and, you know, during the the hotel guests are gonna leave it. You know, they're not always gonna be there. They they might go eat at Bacolies or go take a hike or whatever, so. You know, there's parking at behind, you know, the Rainbow Bridge Parking Lot, there's the public parking lot where the farmer's market is. Which someday will have to be two stories, but you know, that's in the future. But um, I just think these guys are doing a great job and and I'm I'm really impressed and I know it's a problem for the neighbors, but parking is always a problem in this town. But people go to the movie theater and they park at the, you know, Star Market Parking Lot or Westridge, I mean, you know, so there's. There's parking. Just be nice to get this place going so we have another good place to eat and it looks beautiful. Yeah, thank you.
Vice Chair Nolan, were you, were you finished with your remarks for these folks?
Yes, yes, I was.
Excuse me, Commissioner Lottis, your thoughts?
Uh, let's see, um. Yeah, I I'm, I think I'm amenable to looking at the parking, the ITE parking. Uh, as a as a total parking requirement. I still have problems with the parking across Ojai Avenue. Um, I think either whether it's whether it's uh, customers coming from their cars trying to get across the street. Or valets going back and forth. I I don't know, I just have a problem with that, although if we if we, I'm encouraged. That something can be worked out because if we reduce the parking to seventy-eight, then we're we're only talking about, well. We've got the. Uh, eighteen at the offsite, the two oh two Ventura. And and some and the neighbor, the neighbor has raised some 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 things, issues to think about with that. But uh, but my main concern is with the Beacon Parking Lot, but if what is if seventy-eight is totally required. We're only talking about twelve extra spaces somewhere. Um, and I just have a problem with the Beacon Lot, but um. I I I I'm very confident this can all be worked out. I I have to say, I'm, I really give kudos to the applicant. For being uh, what I perceive to be um, very honest and very frank. And I I for one completely appreciate that. I don't think you're trying to, I don't think you're trying to, you know. BS the commission. I I I um, appreciate you, you discussing the the pros and cons pretty, pretty honestly. Um, let's see, do I have anything else? I think that we're pretty close. Well, once the project goes to the Planning Commission. I mean, to the um, Historic Preservation Commission, I think that you're pretty close to just putting this all. Uh, on our plate and letting us cash it through with you. Uh, to figure out what's going to work. So I think we're, I think we're getting close.
Very good. Commissioner Trent?
Um, no, no other comments. I just wanted to uh, again commend the applicant for. Uh, their diligence and their thoroughness. Um, I agree, they're trying to solve a problem that they. Really, I can't really understand because they they haven't really opened yet, so they don't really know volumes and capacities and. And stuff like that until they start operating. And I think, you know, they'll learn as they go and they'll get better and. Um, and I think that having that evaluation every year is a great idea, gives them a chance to kind of reset and look at things. Um, so I I do think that, you know, um, as a community, we need to kind of look at this holistically and realize that. You know, things will change. It doesn't, what what is this out there now is set in stone, so. Um, you know, I like the idea of uh, kind of having an agile approach to to the parking issue. Works in software, so maybe we'll work in parking.
Very good. Incredible, but what, how parking management has transformed. As it relates to technology, particularly with the valet solutions you see now. You know, we can see ins and outs, how long they stay where they park. It's very, very incredible. So that's why we're so encouraged by having dialogue every year because. I don't, by the time in which we have that review, we probably would have already figured out our problems. Um, and be more more proactive about it. So we're we're pretty optimistic about learning. But again, our our starting point is very challenged because it's built on assumptions we don't truly understand yet, so.
Very good. Commissioner Bennett?
Um, I've got a question, uh, and it's probably to um, Vice Chairperson Nolan. Um, there was a tree report in here. We haven't talked about trees. Do, are we, are 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 we going to at some point look at this or is it satisfactory? Um, and are we going to, because what I was hearing is that we're sort of teeing up. Once the Historic Preservation Commission does its work, a sort of global conversation and will we. Are there any things that we need to be talking about in that? That's one question. The other one is just a s- a set of observations. Um, I, at the very first meeting on this subject. Um, I said, you know, you're you're gonna have to live in this town and if we get it all wrong in terms of. Parking and traffic, it's gonna be a mess and you're gonna be living with that mess and um, I'm beginning to understand. Number of independent and dependent variables there are in in this mess that we're looking at here. I think that you've done, the the applicant has done a first-class job, as has their their consultants and. Um, where they've struggled, they've been honest and and forthcoming about where they've struggled to. Figure out how to make it all, make it all work. Um, so. Uh, I I I thank you for that and maybe it's just that I've had a chance to read this data now for the third or fourth time. But I'm beginning to get there in terms of getting a comfort level, although I'm not exactly sure how it's gonna work. As some of you know, I was with the music festival before I took on this. This volunteer job and we didn't know how the town could take fourteen hundred people. Um, if you count the grass uh, in the Libby Bowl every year. Um, but it did and it's one of the miracles of of this town and that is. It does have a theater right in the middle of town that doesn't have a parking lot and it does have a hotel that. Um, is what it is and and you guys have done a great job of doing everything you can to. Make it more accommodating to both the community and to the the uh, to the guest for the guest experience. So um, with the exception of this question about the oak trees, I'm. Uh, I I wanna thank our professionals, uh, Lucas and his staff and uh. Um, and our leadership in Steve to get us to the point we're at at this point. Um, and uh, I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Oh, did you want me to comment about the um, native tree assessment?
Yeah.
Absolutely. You're our resident expert.
I I went through it. It's very thorough, um, well-done. And, you know, I think when this comes back to us, I'm sure this report will be picked up and in our packet and if we need to. Go into more detail, we can. But yeah, it's it's very well-done and they've covered all their bases. As far as I can tell at this point. Once again, as the rest of my fellow commissioners said, you know, I feel like the applicant, many, I keep calling you T male Roblar, but. They've been very thorough and conscientious and, you know, kind of going through the hoops, so to speak and. Uh, just how much I appreciate it and as my fellow commissioner said, you know, we're all, we're all very um, we're impressed and. Pleased and happy to to be able to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, and I I echo echo all the good comments from from my fellow commissioners. I look forward to getting the next steps accomplished here, the Historic Resources Report, the HPC meeting. And then finally, a meeting of the Planning Commission to deal with with the big questions. I think that there has been a lot of compromise on both sides. I think that using the ITE. Documentation makes it possible for everyone to feel good about not too big a problem with parking. Um, and for those of you that have not read the nineteen ninety-one parking study, and I haven't seen the follow-up to it yet. But it only, it did not consider any parking within a block of Ojai Avenue to the south. So there's Santa Ana Street, there's whatever, Topa Topa Street. There's a lot of parking around. And that could be used for a lot of things and not impact the hotel using. The parking spaces that they have already contracted for or purchased space for. So I feel pretty confident that 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 problem is likely behind us now. And I'm very encouraged by that. And I'm hoping that we can see you soon for some real decisions on this. Uh, Councilmember Haney, yes, please, sir.
Steve, ju- just to add to that, just, let's not forget the ATP. In the enhancements that we're doing on this one fifty, especially starting at Kenyatta and working through town. All the additional crosswalks, all the additional beacons, all of the, all the work that we're doing to create a safe environment. For the community, for walking, bicycling and for driving. Um, that's gotta be factored into all that's going on here. Because that's gonna happen. It'll probably happen about the same time their building gets completed.
And I think that's that's a good example of of the city moving in the direction of servicing this project. Just like the owners are moving in the direction of the city in terms of providing parking. So yes, thank you for that. Do we have anything more, folks, that El Roblar team there? Do you feel like you've gotten what you need out of this meeting this evening?
Yes, absolutely. We we um, we honestly just wanted to share some some additional information that. Uh, was requested in the last session. I think this was incredibly helpful, as was the last session. Um, I'm very encouraged, at least by the support we have from everyone and um. I look forward to hopefully having a meeting as soon as we can, Lucas. What do you think, next month? Uh, realistic target, we commit to something now? I can't, I can't commit to it. I can commit to this, getting it on the agenda as quickly as possible. I can commit to that. Okay.
Very good. Well, thank you all for that. Uh, should we move on then to uh, the the item that we left behind, Lucas? Item four, the draft land use and transportation concepts?
Yes, so I, uh, yeah, I uh, I finished the presentation, but um, as the commission started. Going into some of the um, potential points, um, I think I was gonna pull up the slides, which I think I had started to. To gather, let's see if I have them.
Yes, sir, Mr. Haney.
Steve, I just, um, I've had a long day and I got a longer one tomorrow and I've already spoke too much tonight. God bless you. Thank you for your service. Um, like I said, you guys are an incredible group. Um, just keep it going. Keep it going.
Thank you for the kind words. There's, there's a lot of dedicated folks here poking into the details of every case.
There are. If you guys have been on this for as long as I think you've been on it, you've been on it a long time. What's that? Who's that, uh, what's, who's that comedian? What's his, his, his line? Get her done? You're getting close, folks. You're getting close.
I think we are.
Right, take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right, so I have the uh, so two, I think two things here. One, I have the slideshow that I can share my screen with. The second is I think we can start running through any sort of comments to, you know, each of those slides are kind of a global comment. I think I'm already kind of hearing that there's uh, some some questions regarding the the size of those maps. We can certainly blow those up if that's um, a comment and and question moving forward with this with these concepts.
Yes.
Yeah, is uh, to do this justice, Lucas, is it possible to um, to push this to another meeting? Uh, it's just getting late. And I and I think that, I don't know if we'd be able to do it justice, just prove. Look as possible.
We are, we are making space in every meeting to talk about the general plan.
True.
I agree, but we, um, there was a big ad in the, you know, High Valley News to, you know, to weigh in on this and. And um, I just thought that it would be good to go slide, you know, slide by slide. And if anybody had any questions with the slides, but that's, that is definitely gonna take time and um. And, you know, these are concepts that I think are pretty. You know, if we have anything to say about them, we should say it with, in conjunction with the slide and have it, have it. Available to public participation and review and uh, so I I would be amenable, I would be really happy to. Do this another night.
The the other option with this, and I I'd I'd ask to see if there's anybody in the audience. That's attending virtually that would wanna speak on this and I I see there's one hand raised. But it might actually benefit this process to um, to schedule a special. Um, Planning Commission meeting, so it it really kind of stands on its own, two feet.
I like that.
We have enough time.
It's a pretty important topic.
I think we might make a lot more progress if we started this topic at six PM.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, there's some. Yeah, because we're at ten o'clock right now. Go ahead.
So if we had a motion to continue item four to a date certain, what would you pick?
You're asking me?
Yes. Speak from now, next Wednesday?
Uh, I wouldn't wanna do it as early as as next Wednesday. Um, and I was assuming Wednesday would be the operable and most convenient time for for this, for this body. I'm assuming.
How how about the second Wednesday in February?
That would be the ninth. The ninth.
I'm available. Everybody's pulling out phones and calendars.
Yeah, we're getting our calendars up.
Yeah, I could do that.
So we would be meeting on the fir- second already.
Right.
And then it'd be the following.
I can do the ninth.
Chair, we do have a hand raised. Are we just gonna ignore it?
No, I think we have it on the agenda. We should probably listen to one member of the public before we move on. So please, tell us who would like to speak. Sean McDermott, okay?
Yes.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me okay?
Just fine, thank you.
Uh, thanks for, uh, I've been here four hours, so thanks for uh, taking the comment. I know you guys have been here four hours too, so I can't complain. Um, so I'll try and make it, uh, you know, quick. Um. The, and some of it was actually relevant to the comments today, so it's it's good that I actually get to speak today. Um, four quick comments. One is on mixed-use development. One is on. V M U and particularly the name of the character area being V M U. Uh, one is on parking, and the other is on permitted uses, so that they're the four quick things, and um. They all kind of relate to the general plan pretty directly, or they will be kind of the byproduct of the general plan later, so that's kind of why I wanna hit on all four. Uh, but the first one was mixed use, and this is actually related to a comment that came up earlier in the meeting. Where I think there was a comment about the planning commission having a lot of discretion over parking uh, space requirements. When uh, in V M U zoning, but I believe it's only the land use being uh, a mixed-use development that actually applies in that case. It doesn't really matter what the, what the zoning is. Um, and so I think that's an important detail because. You know, what really matters is when a a property is a mixed-use uh, development. It doesn't really matter at all. Uh, what zoning it is, and and so we should not feel afraid of uh, of V M U zoning a property. Uh, and how it might impact parking later, you should be aware of that. Um. A comment on the actual general plan document that was shared by by Lucas and team. Um, one of the concerns I had about V M U, the label that's being used for the character area, is that it is the same as the zone. And whenever there's a naming, uh, where we're talking about two different things, but using the same label, I think it can be a problem. Um, and so what I would recommend doing, if it if it make, if you guys agree, is is call the uh. The character areas or the neighborhoods something different than any of the names of our zones. And and for example, in this case. Maybe just call it, you know, North Village and South Village, or just call it Village, or but don't call it V M U. It's possible in what you're calling the V M U area. There will be properties that are not V M U zoned, and there will be properties that are V M U zoned that don't exist in those character areas. And so I I would recommend labeling character areas differently than zones for for that reason. Um, parking obviously comes up every single meeting. Uh, it's surprising the extent to which parking comes up every meeting and every agenda item, but it isn't covered in the general plan documents really at all. Um, and so I'd like to see a lot more on parking in there. I'd like to see if it's possible, the link between the parking analysis that was approved by city council and we're scheduling. And the timing of the general plan update, because obviously they should be related, and I don't see how they're related anywhere in the. In the documents. Um, I actually got a copy of the same in-lu parking document that uh, Chair Quilisi was talking about. Uh, it's super old. We actually should all have a look at it. I highly recommend it. Um. The the in-lu map for the city is actually really only in the very downtown area. And given that the general plan update wants to have, you know, businesses and even residences spread more. I I think it it actually makes sense probably to have a much larger in-lu parking area, much further east, maybe into the industrial area. Certainly along the corridor and the gateway areas. Um, if if businesses or even potentially residents in these areas. Can't, you know, provide parking, which they won't be able to in many cases, with with residents over retail, for example. Um, I think an in-lu parking fee would make sense, and and then funding the the city's ability to provide, you know, parking lots. Um, and and also in-lu parking, it should be noted, today it doesn't actually allow in-lu parking for any. Anything but new development that is non-residential, and so it may need a change there to allow things that are in-lu parking for. Uh, uh, renovations, for residential, et cetera. So I think it'd be a good idea to take a look at that as part of the the general plan update. Um, and then last item was on permitted uses. Um. It seems like in the general plan update, we're adding residential potential in basically all zones, including the industrial zone, which I think is. Is probably good. We need to be very generous in that regard, and set up a lot of live-work situations. Um, but I would also, you know, suggest or ask, we we take a look at. Clarifying or even potentially removing some of the allowable land uses in the areas that we are viewing as residential, including V M U. Um, you know, one close to my heart would be alcohol, but also tobacco, cannabis, even gun shops is in our code, right? Um, today, these are allowed in in a lot of different places. Um, there is talk of expanding cannabis beyond the industrial area. Um, I would ask the kind of the question for planning commission to come back to on a different day. You know, where should we be allowing uh, alcohol and bars? Where should we be allowing tobacco, cannabis, et cetera? Do we want them generally concentrated in the downtown area, or maybe along the corridor? Or do we want to allow them to bleed into the residential areas? And if so, you know, how do we manage their. Their impact to make it as minimal as possible for for noise or or parking or any other, any any other potential impact? So I'd like to see if possible, you know, all of those issues uh, addressed. I think getting the parking study done. Up front is gonna be critical to actually allow a a lot of the other stuff to take place as well. The in-lu parking. Uh, update probably needs to be part of the of the parking study. And that is it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. No more speakers, Sherry?
Not that I can see, no.
Okay.
I would just say, if there are any of those speakers that are in the audience, um, if you could press the raise your hand or raise hand function. So that we know you're out there and that you want to speak on this specific item. For once. Yeah, thank you. I don't see anybody else.
Alright, good. Let's get, let's get back to item four. Is everybody agreeable to the ninth of February?
Yes.
Yes.
Man, can can I suggest that we put a cap on the time for it, so people will know that. That uh, it's a one, it's a one, as we as we notice this to the public. That uh, we we let them know it's a single, it's a single-issue meeting, and it's a, and it's like six to eight, or whatever it's gonna be.
So. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
It's a good idea. I can put that, I can actually specify that in a flyer when we put that back in the paper.
Right.
And thinking, thinking about it, the uh, two weeks from now, or even next week, we don't have time to notice it. But do we need to notice it? It's not a public hearing.
So there's two ways in which we're gonna get the word out. Um, and the first way is obviously through the. Through the local um, paper. The second is, there is a growing constant contact list. Through the general plan update, and we've done that email blast to those individuals as well. We'll continue to do that. Even with this um, special meeting that we're gonna have on uh, February ninth. Um. So it's, it's a, it's a point of both of those pieces. Kind of being the sum of the whole in terms of getting that out to the public, and then having the public then reach out to their friends, hopefully. And then their friends, it's kind of that telephone at that point. But um, getting the word out is, I think. Critical, and those are the two of the pieces that we've had up to this point. Back, even the the workshop that we did a year ago, um, had really good turnout. I wanna say there was probably. Almost a hundred people that were in attendance at one point, and then that participated in the workshop. It was right around, um, I wanna say eighty. So it was a good number.
Just, just for the commissioners to keep in mind, when we talk about. About continuing a a topic. If it has to be re-noticed, then you're talking about backing up two weeks plus. Probably closer to three weeks to notify the newspaper. If there's a new notice required, because it's ten days, but the newspaper's only once a week, and they have a deadline before that, so.
Yep. Absolutely. Uh, notification obviously isn't required for this, but certainly if we're gonna get any sort of tangible feedback. Uh, notification is is ultimately critical. To to um, to kind of guiding us here.
It it may not guide us on this particular issue, but if we do. Continue to a date uncertain, there's a certain buffer zone that we have to build in. And we can't do that date uncertain until after that.
Yeah.
Just to get the noticing done. Alright, well, I think it's the consensus that we do this on February ninth. Did you want to talk for just a moment about? The February second meeting?
Um, so that's, so we're moving on to planning commission tentative agendas?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, let me just go through this real quickly. So we've got on the regular agenda for February second. Um. Looks like we have actually four items. It's seven-ten Olive Street. There's a concept review. That will be coming to this commission for some feedback, and is to create twenty-one single-story senior. Um, housing units. You'll see more information on that. We've got a set of plans. We've got some detail to that. You'll see that. Um. On the, on the second. The second is a short-term rental ordinance. There's some cleanup items that that um, we've been recently ma- made aware of, and I think it's a part of. Some of the um, government code changes that took place uh, leading into this year, January first, I believe. Um, the city attorney will correct me if I'm wrong on the dates, but that that's really the the gist of what we're looking at here, so you can expect to see that ordinance. Those cleanup ordinance revisions um, as well, and that'll be on the second. General plan update, um, I think we're gonna hold off on that for right now. We've got some bigger pieces to that puzzle. Um, coming forward, and just as a standing item, we typically have the work. Um, the work, the work plan that comes along with this. An item that is not on, thank you. Sherry in my ear over here. Yeah, an item that is not on this agenda, but I wanna make the commission aware of this, because I just got confirmation um, this afternoon. From the um, the applicant is three fifteen North Signal Street. So that um, particular address uh, was, there was determination made by this commission for approval. On December fifteenth, I believe.
It's Montgomery Street, not Signal.
Did I say, oh, Montgomery Street, sorry, North Montgomery.
Montgomery, that's typical ramble.
Um, typical, it's typical and ramble, and so that one, this commission uh, took a vote on it, however. Because there was a lack of a quorum of um, voting members that lived within the community when that was done. This item has to come back to this commission for an official vote. Um, at that meeting, there was. Three members that voted on it, um, Chair Quilisi, Vice Chair Nolan, and um, Commissioner Bennett. Unfortunately, the way in which our code reads, two of those members, uh, Vice Chair Nolan and Commissioner Bennett are not. Residents that live within the um, within the boundaries of the community. So uh, the code requires a majority uh, for it to be a quorum, meaning a majority of of residents living within the community that reside within the community. So we've got to recast that vote. Unfortunately, it didn't, it wasn't actually a legal vote. Um, so it's a, it's an issue, and unfortunately, it fall, it falls on my shoulders because it was an error on my part. But the reality is, is that I follow the code very strictly, and it's, it has to come back to the commission for a vote. That's gonna be in the paper for this Friday, and then we're gonna send out the notification to the um, residents within the three-foot radius as before. So.
The code reads, it says, no quorum, any quorum, no, no quorum. Can have a majority of members that live outside the city limits. And that's the rule that we broke.
Correct.
So. Two to two, because John had to recuse himself.
Mm-hmm.
But if it's two to, if if we have two residents of the city and two residents from outside the city, that's le- that's a legal quorum. For taking a vote.
Correct. I don't, I don't wanna dive into any more of this. I think the city attorney is getting mad at me for. For getting into too much of it, but I wanted to at least give the cliffhanger, and that's, I'm done. I'm not gonna say anymore, because I know. That's gonna be coming before this commission, um, February second. And it's through, it's three fifteen North Montgomery. I think that's an important, I wanna clarify that for the record. Alright, that's it for me. Oh, wait, the sixteenth I. Yeah, there's the February sixteenth, we have the likelihood of. A lotline adjustment appeal, that's eight oh five Country Club, so you could potentially be seeing that on the sixteenth.
Eight oh three Country Club.
Ah, see, my eyes are horrible right now. I'm sorry. It's eight oh three. Uh, Country Club, so.
Okay. For those unfamiliar with all of the details of the geography of the city. Olive Street is that one block street that comes off north of Grand, just, just to the east of Signal. And the property is adjacent to the Gables.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a lot.
Part of the Gables property, actually, I think.
Looks like, is it a vacant lot right now?
It's vacant, yes.
Yep.
Yep, it came before us once before with a concept review for building half a dozen.
Yep. They'll be.
We saw it once before. We'll see it again with a different plan.
Yes, let's leave it at that. There's gonna be a lot of background on it. I don't want to make the attorney any any more upset with me than he probably already is.
Right. Okay. Thank you all very much for your diligence and your patience and your persistence, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.